Okay, I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for February 21st, 2023 for 7:00 PM start. Everyone in attendance, if you can please silence any of your cellphone or any communication devices so that you cannot disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hinoz.
Here.
Councilmember Ramoud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Elsawafi. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Council President.
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First item of business. First item.
First item will be the invocation.
Okay.
By Pat.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, Pat, yes, I apologize. Thank you. I'll read it, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Okay, this time I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Mustafa Hamoud.
At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor David Nellis of First United Methodist Church, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, council members for inviting me to be here this evening. It's a great honor to be here. So let's just bow our head, should we? O great God, we hold up to you the business of this council chamber this evening for the good of our city of Dearborn. And we are mindful, O God, of cities around the world that are facing great decisions, especially those in Turkey and Syria upon the earthquake. We pray also, O God, for those in the city of Kyiv and the many great heartbreaking decisions the government officials make on behalf of their citizens for their safety. O God, we are mindful of these things tonight here in Dearborn as we speak the right words, as we say the right things, as we work for the good of this great city of Dearborn. And, O God, we invoke your blessing upon us this evening that we may indeed make the right decisions to build a city fit for its citizens. We pray this in the name of Almighty God.
I would like to introduce the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can now I have the first item of business?
Yes, item number four is our public comment section.
Okay, the council rules allow for a 30 minutes of public comment. If anyone here from the public would like to speak to the council pertaining city business, you can please fill out a comment green card, which we have two now, or you could step up after the comment cards have been exhausted and you have a three-minute limitation to speak to the council. So the first one would be Dawn Nowak. Yes, hi.
This is being addressed to Mayor Hamoud, the council, and interested parties. I would like to explain to you something that has been bothering me on behalf of my mother. I understand things change in time, but when older folks look forward to retiring and have worked all their lives to have a peaceful and relaxed golden year, nothing should keep them from it. My name is Dawn Nowak. I was nominated by Leslie Herrick and appointed by the mayor to be a chairperson, excuse me, in the Disability Commission. At current, I enjoy being a part of the commission, but it would be against my better judgment not to talk to you all about my own personal family when there is a disability involved, as well as insurance issues that go along with it. My mom, excuse me, Diane Purdy, worked for the city for 13 years and started in working at the library in 1990, then worked under Doug Feldkamp in the Communications Department. She has always been proud of that time in her life to tell family and friends she has retired from the city of Dearborn, which has been an attribute all her life. My mom knew the city would always be fair to her and others, no matter what the situation. So when she felt that she wasn't being heard by making phone calls and going to her retirement meeting, it was important to talk to me and my sister about what to do regarding her medical insurance and prescriptions. My mom has some illnesses that only medication can control, and seeing her doctors can help. As of January 2023, her insurance has changed so much she has to use a card with only $500 a year to help pay for her medical expenses and her deductible, which is $250. She has a $10 copay now at all of her doctor's offices, which she never did before, and out-of-pocket expenses when it comes to medications, which is a lot. My mom has a stringent budget, and now her medical expenses are chipping away at her wallet, which she is worried about being able to afford her necessities. I'm not retired now, and I don't know how pensions work, but from what I understand...
You have 30 seconds.
Once you retire, your package should be what it is. In closing, I want to thank you for all listening to my feelings. I think it's important that the pensions should stay the same, especially when they were grandfathered in, and they shouldn't be changed. So I think that it would be fair to all, both young and old, to consider this. And I thank you for listening to me and to please respond as quick as you can to resolve this issue. I thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nowak. Next, we have Kat.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Kat. I am a Dearborn resident. I don't want to release any other information at this time because this is televised. This is regarding a sensitive matter that I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council members. I did get a chance briefly before this meeting to speak with Chief Shaheen, so I'm very happy about that. But Saturday, February 18th, my son was at York Park. He's 12 years old with two of his friends. He was playing at the basketball courts. He was then chased and threatened, racial slurred and everything else, and ran off the park, found two adults that were walking their dogs who helped him. And we called the police. They did come. They did take a report. This is not the first incident of this happening at York Park, which is located at North York, Hollander, Lawrence, and Mildred. It's in the center of there. Excuse me. I have lived in this neighborhood all my life. I used to go to this park. This is getting to be more and more, which I would hate to say. I would love to see it's getting lessened. I did send an email that evening to the chief. He said he will respond to that, or I will be getting correspondence. But I did want to bring this to your attention to let you know that this is worsening, and it's not just in Dearborn, but I don't want to see it get as bad as it is in other cities. I'm sure you've all heard about the Dearborn Heights incident in Presswood. I don't want that to come to Dearborn. I love Dearborn. I want to stay in Dearborn, but I want to feel safe in Dearborn. And I want my children to be able to stay safe in Dearborn. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention and ask for resources, which I've sent an email to Chief Shaheen asking for resources, maybe more police presence in the neighborhoods near the parks and going through the neighborhoods. I won't take up much more of your time. We have a feeding going soon, so I don't want to disrupt your meeting. But thank you again for listening, and I appreciate you. And I do appreciate Chief Shaheen, since he has taken office, has done so much. So I want to say thank you to him and thank you to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. If I may, Council President.
Yes.
So, you know, there's no room in Dearborn for that kind of behavior, obviously. There's a police report that's been written. Our investigators are in the process of trying to locate the individuals responsible for that. And I can assure you that we'll do everything we can to identify them. So, and we'll increase patrols and presence there as well.
Yeah, I do appreciate that, and I appreciate, Kat, we did receive an email from you, and we know it's a police matter, and we have full faith and confidence in our police department. And we do appreciate you bringing it forward so that it is recognized that something did happen. So we do appreciate that.
Well, I found out later on, there's more that's happened, you know, previous to my son's situation.
We appreciate, that's why...
That's why I'm glad you brought it forward. We do appreciate it. Thank you, Chief Shaheen.
Thank you. Okay, we do have some more cards? Okay. Remember, folks, if you're here to speak to the council, we have this portion for you to come forward. There's also a portion at the end of the meeting, and then any agenda item can be spoken to as well. And this is Rita Talib. Talib, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Council President, Councilmembers, Administration, Corporation Council Chief. I'm here before you regarding a matter that you're all too familiar with. Unfortunately, the harm and the nuisance at the car wash is still ongoing. We just had a couple of incidents that were particularly alarming and so offensive to me and my family happen. My mom had fallen and injured herself a couple of weeks ago, and we had to rush her to the emergency room. I was there with her until 4:00 in the morning, and upon finally returning home, thank God, she was okay with no major injuries to her head and her neck. There was a gentleman who thought that it was reasonable and okay to use the car wash at 4:00 AM in the morning, blasting his radios with very, very intrusive lights glaring and piercing into her bedroom window, which abuts the alleyway. I was enraged. I'm enraged every day living there. I'm enraged every day knowing that my 79-year-old mother, who raised faithfully eight children on her own in my city, in this beautiful community that we are so proud to be a part of. I'm enraged knowing that the city has yet to curtail and put an end to this nuisance. And the police officer who came that day unfortunately didn't really know the circumstances and ongoing issues there, elected to not give the person a ticket. I was enraged even more. I followed up with the commander the next morning, and luckily, a week later, they did issue a ticket to the car wash owner finally. That same week, we had more incidents, and yesterday, we had two incidents in a row. We are constantly awakened out of our beds. We're human beings. We need to function. I work from home. I'm a caretaker as well, and I serve this city in many hats and capacities, and I'm proud to do so. I'm enraged that this continues to happen, and I just received a report today that actually a decibel reading was taken in January of 2023, where the findings of that decibel reading by the police department indicate that, at the very least, the machinery and equipment at this facility is operating at at least 15 to 20 decibel points above the allowable level in the ordinance law and in the ordinance, Chapter 13 of our city. I don't know what else to say to you other than I will repeat. I'm speaking on behalf of my family. An entire neighborhood has been disempowered, and it's no wonder that blue-collar, working-class immigrants who come from around the world seeking refuge, better opportunities in this country, feel that being civically engaged is not an option for them because they see that even when they come, even when they speak, even when they build community and rally around a cause...
You have 30 seconds.
...that nothing happens and the outcomes are not in their favor. I'm urging you today to cease and desist this car wash from operating immediately, whether you have to operate and activate the nuisance abatement or take them to court. And I would like to know what else you're going to do because the strategy of the cat-and-mouse game with the police coming, not finding someone, not getting there on time, is not working. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ... Okay, anyone else for comment cards? If anybody would like to speak to the council pertaining city business, you can please step forward and take opportunity now, if you liked as well. Councilman Paris, one second. Is it regarding this issue, the lady?
No.
Okay, so Mr. Torri, we have our director here. I know that we've met several times. Would you like to come up? I know we've met several times with Ms. Talib regarding the issue of this car wash. So the director, Torri, would you like to introduce yourself and just give us an update of where we're at on the situation?
Sure, thanks, sir. My name is Jordan Torri, Director of Economic Development. Hey, Rita, how's it going? Everybody, good evening. So here's where we are. So we did do decibel readings. We did find that the machines are in violation. So this business had been operating under, and as you referenced, some of the meetings we've had with Rita and members of the city staff and council, they were put under a reoccupancy to get all their violations in order. That timeline has passed. That passed, I believe, in early January, so we followed up with tickets and compliance actions thereafter. So once somebody violates the reoccupy, once they pass the timeline, the next step is to escalate through tickets and enforcement through the court system. And so we can't necessarily, and again, just please keep me honest here, correct me if I'm wrong, but we cannot just shut down the business unilaterally. Once we have those violations, we go through the court process. We seek a court order, and if the court orders, the compliance, and usually what they'll happen is, and I'm still learning this circuit that serves Dearborn, but my understanding of these cases is typically what they will do is they'll look at the efforts that we've done to achieve compliance, and they'll usually order the business to achieve that compliance within a timeframe. And if they don't listen after the court weighs in, then heavier remedies can be taken. But at this time, we're essentially moving through that process. We're committed to finishing that process and seeing it through. But until that occurs, what we are limited to is writing nuisance tickets in partnership with the police department, who has been helpful in that regard, and also continuing to enforce on any further violations. I know they installed some lights that were against permit, and those did not have photometrics attached to them, so we actually required them to replace those lights and to submit the photometrics. So we follow up on the building permit side and partner with the police when those nuisance tickets are necessary. But largely, where we are at is moving through the court process. And so we can provide an update after the court date is scheduled and held in terms of what those next steps are. But that's sort of an expectation of what we expect to follow at this phase.
Okay, thank you, Director. So for me, I appreciate that, and I will have our council executive note that, so we can email you just to see what the court process did shake out. But I think the other thing that was concerning for me was the times of operation.
Yes.
So that, I know when you took over, you didn't have the full scope of what was going on.
Right.
But there was comments from Rita regarding, Talib, regarding the previous zoning boards and the actual neighborhood coming and contesting and so on and so forth.
Right.
So my concern really is, I understand the court process. I'm fully familiar with it. I understand the legality of it. My concern, though, is hours of operation. So do they have to shut off? And I don't care what they post. Are they restricted based on what they were? Because just so everybody knows, this is a new owner that took over. The old owner's gone. New owner took over. What is their hours of operation? Are they limited by the city of Dearborn?
So my understanding is their zoning does not limit their hours of operation, but there is noise ordinance and nuisance ordinance.
I know, let me ask.
Sure.
Mr. Torri, I'm going to ask you, answer the question that I asked. I don't want to elaborate because we'll be here all night.
Sure.
I appreciate that, and I understand there's other things we can do. But the hour of operation has been a concern for me from day one. So the answer to the question is that there is no limitation?
That's correct, sir.
Right. So, Mr. Romer, maybe you can enhance this now. Does that mean they can operate for 24 hours a day, or is that a special requirement? Mr. Romer?
There's no hour limitation. They can operate as confined within normal course of business. So unless there's some zoning restriction or some land use restriction put on by the ZBA, they would be permitted to operate 24 hours a day.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romer. And is that your understanding, there's no restriction on the zoning regarding that business?
That is my understanding, sir.
So we're limited for the city regarding our nuisance and our noise ordinances?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that because that was a question that I wasn't sure, you know, because I didn't think they could operate after 11:00 or a certain time as well. So I wanted to make sure. Let me open up for our Councilman Paris had some questions.
Do we know how long ago that the ownership changed hands? Because I know this has come before us before. I mean, how long ago was it before January?
Right. I believe, and I can give you the exact date. Yeah, it was roughly last...
Yeah, it's the same. Just for the record, under our council, when Ms. Talib showed up, that was at the same time that the new owner had taken over.
Okay.
So there was nothing that was brought to the council in the last eight years that I was here. It started when we and this council...
The reason why I'm bringing it up is I did have some conversation one day with the administration in an office about this particular circumstances surrounding the business, and it was brought up about possibly compliance by the owner, self-compliance, to go ahead and shut down and have the actual hoses turn off, that you can't operate after 10:00 at night. And I believe that I thought that it was going to go through, that there was going to be the owner that said that they were going to be doing that. And I don't know if that's still in effect then or not. It seems not.
So I could speak to that, Council President, if you like. So essentially, what happened is, yes, that was worked out as part of the reoccupy. One of the reasons we started issuing tickets and escalating enforcement is they did not complete those items. So it is part of the expectation that, especially now with the sound readings, they are to show machines that comply with the noise ordinance. And we did work with them as part of the electrical inspection, so all of the machines to have a timer attached to the circuits to turn them off. So that is something that we are expecting them to do as part of their inspections. My understanding is that has not been done yet, but we are still holding them accountable to it as part of the enforcement. As part of, ultimately, in order to get a C of O, they do have to complete these items. So that's one of the things that we're pushing for at this process. So that's still very much on our radar.
So there is a valid C of O as we stand now?
In the reoccupy process, it has to be renewed. And so they're in a state where they have to complete these items. And if the court gives us a court order to enforce that compliance, that will allow us to provide heavier remedies to enforce those items, such as ceasing the activity of the business. But right now, because they're in this process and they're going through this due process, we cannot shut them down currently. There's not an imminent life safety hazard that...
But when you speak on reoccupy, Councilman Paris, I wanted to just follow up on that, if you're good. When you speak of reoccupy, are you saying, because this body cannot impose those restrictions on them? Are you saying they impose those restrictions on themselves as a business?
So they did voluntarily agree to allow the timers. We leveraged the requirement for them on the timers. There is no code requirement that says you have to have timers that shut your business off. What we did, however, because they have electrical work that's necessary anyway, we added that as a condition that we would like to see. They voluntarily accepted that condition, but they have not completed their electrical activities in general, so that item is still open. So we are still expecting it as a close of the reoccupy, and we're pushing for it. We are operating within the limits of our authority, but that is an item we are pushing for.
So is it their expectation, is it your expectation or the city's expectation that they are going to restrict their hours of operations voluntarily?
They have indicated that they would do so, yes.
Ms. Talib, if you'd like to come up and address... Yeah, because I don't want you yelling from the street.
A couple of things. A new owner took ownership in March of 2022. The way I found out is that they had piled up all the snow from all of their eight bays and their whole parking lot into the alleyway, which pushed up all the snow. If you remember, there was a huge snow day in March of 2022. Not like now, we don't have anything barely. Large blocks of ice onto our fence and broke pieces of our fence. So they were trespassing. And I had gone out and said, hey, you know, what are you doing? Like, you can't do that. And I was like, oh, I'm a new owner. I don't know. The new owners always say, I don't know. And that's how I found out that it's the new owner. The previous owner had willingly put the 10:00 PM closure on himself because when we came before the ZBA and it stripped him of the variance to operate the two automatic bays, those were some conditions they put on themselves in order for them to stay open. So the car wash has been voluntarily closing at 10:00 PM. Supposedly, that's what they agreed to, but they haven't actually implemented that because the hose are still on. They're still working 24 hours a day.
What year was that, Mr. ...?
Back in 2013.
Okay, so you're indicating from 2013, they put self-conditions in the zoning, which is all on the record?
Correct.
And they never complied?
And they never complied. Even there's sign when you go down Wyoming, it says 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And when I filed the history of the car wash and saw all the documents, I went back and I saw the meeting minutes, and I saw the emails between the then administrator and the different bodies who were making decisions. And Mr. Harakeh, who was the previous, only before this one, had said that he would close it at 10:00 PM, and he was making promises and saying, I promise to do this.
I understand, but I appreciate that information. So, Mr. Torri, Jackie, you have this down? So we would like you to research with your team when you can. I know it takes time for back-to-the-2000 ZBA to see if this was a condition that was placed on the record of opening because then it is enforceable.
Right.
So we need to find that out. I know you took over a couple of years back, so we'll find that out.
I can send him the email.
Happy to look that over.
I understand, but the emails are not good enough. There's a record. Zoning is very, there's a legal...
Just maybe because that email might have like a number or a file or something that could help him.
I understand, but I want to get it resolved.
Sure.
Okay, so to me, I want to get to the bottom line. If there was a zoning condition and that condition was placed, then it is lawful and it has to remain. Then the answer from the director would be differently. It would be, he will find it out, and then this will not be a self-combat. I asked that question. Is it voluntarily? It can't be voluntarily if it was a condition before.
The owners at the time voluntarily said that they would close at 10:00 PM in order for them to stay open because the neighbors, as they are now...
I understand that. But if that's the case, then that should be in effect from 2013.
Yeah, of course.
And so we got to, I know, but that's obviously not what happened.
I know, it's never been enforced.
I know.
But also, now that we have these decibel readings, no, they can't open 24 hours a day because...
The decibel readings are separate because the decibel readings doesn't matter what time it is. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, so you're indicating, maybe I misunderstood.
There's different daytime and nighttime?
Right, I understand. But the decibel readings could be at any time of the day. Because remember, you came in and said if two vacuums are on and somebody's closing at the same time, it reached the level?
No, what I'm saying is if they're above the allowable decibel amount in the daytime and the nighttime per the ordinance nuisance, right? Then how could they operate 24 hours if they're not in law? Like, it's not lawful.
I know. I guess we're talking about two different things. If they're in violation from the noise ordinance...
Yes, they are.
It's, that has, and they're pushing that through the courts. So that issue is being handled.
No, I get it. I get it.
That has nothing to do with the time they open. That's a different issue.
No, but if they open in order to operate the machinery that is violating the law, what are they opening for then? Just to say that they're open? You see what I'm saying?
Right. But that's why they're going to court. So that's where that's at.
I understand. And in the interim, though, my...
In the interim, let me just stop you right there.
In the interim, what do we do?
In the interim, there is, the city of Dearborn and the city council cannot cease their operation. There's a court process. There's a due process laws, and the person has a right to defend himself, and that's a court action. What I suggest you do is go to the court and stand, and you can go and talk to them. And when you get there and make your complaint, they're heard as well because you are, you know, a victim of the circumstances.
Yeah, I would love to know, when is the court date?
I know, but we talk about interim because you came before and said this has been happening for 50 years.
No, 30.
I've been on the council for nine. I never seen you until we...
30 years.
30 years, okay. I'm sorry, 30 years.
It's okay.
I was here for nine. I never seen you until this administration.
But that doesn't mean we weren't filing complaints.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay, just want to let you know.
My point is you got to give us an expectation to get your resolve. There is a, let me ask you this. In the 30 years, did they go to court one time in the last 30 years?
I don't believe so, no.
I don't think so either. Are they in court now?
From what he's saying, yeah. I don't know what the court date is. I don't know.
I know, but you're not a party to it. That's the way they're going through. So my point is, I don't want to give the perception that we're sitting here doing nothing. It's been about 18 months. There was a new owner. They have went through everything.[1649.87] It's been about 18 months, there was a new owner, they have went through everything, we're going to get to the bottom of it, and I need that answer regarding the zoning requirements. And we'll get back to you, and I know that, Jackie, you have her information as well. But I promise you, we're not trying to skirt an issue, but I don't want to give a false narrative that, you know, we're not doing nothing and you know, your statement about people don't want to come and do anything because the government doesn't do anything. That's not the case. The government is doing a lot, and we're going to make sure, but we have to go through the process.
Again, you've made these comments to me before when I've spoken. This is nothing personal against you and your leadership and your administration as you've taken office and what you're aware of. I've never personally made any comments about you. What I'm expressing is the sentiments of the people in my neighborhood and our collective lived experience, which carries a lot of weight, because it's not just us that's being harmed, but people get together in the community and they talk. So these are the sentiments of our lived experience, Council President.
Right, no, I understand too, but I don't think, I disagree with you that they would compare. I mean, where we came from overseas, they don't have electricity. So I don't want to compare our government to theirs.
That's not my threshold to how I compare things.
I know, but the threshold is, we're doing everything we can, and since you brought this to this administration, there has been an action that has taken place and there's going through the court.
Mm-hmm.
So I disagree with those sentiments, but you have your every right to say that that's the sentiment of that area.
Sure.
And I understand that, but I think the people are very happy living in the city of Dearborn, and our services are very good, and we're doing the best we can to make sure you're happy.
I'm not sure why you felt the need to say that. Again, I'm sharing the collective sentiment of the people in my neighborhood who are being harmed.
Okay.
I don't know why you always think you have to take it so personally.
It's not personal, ma'am.
You always say these every single time.
You come up here and say that it's been happening for 30 years and nobody's doing nothing. That has not come in front of us.
So what that comment means is that the harm has not been stopped. That's what that means. The harm has not been stopped. And so, Council President, actually, my mom wanted to give you a statement as well, she couldn't be here tonight. But the harm not being stopped, I don't think any of you would trade places with us and live one second in our home. And us living there and continuing to stand our ground is not any indication of the lack of harm that's happening, right? My mom has a right to live in that home and pass that home on as generational wealth to her children and her grandchildren and her great-grandchildren, whomever she wants to bequeath it to, right? So we're not going to be put in a position where she's forced to leave and this is like some sort of like private issue between two residents. This is a public nuisance, it's a city matter. And I will say, the collective sentiment of the people in my neighborhood is that we speak up, we come, we're civically engaged, and we don't achieve the outcomes that we are fighting so passionately for and so rightfully for. So thank you for disagreeing with that. I don't know why you would share that the city of Dearborn and speak in general comments. I'm speaking specifically about this circumstance and this issue here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Pierce?
If I could, Council President, thank you. Just one comment. I know Ms. Rita has come up a number of times, and even though she says she's speaking for her neighborhood, I can understand how we can take that on council as one person coming forward. But, you know, we're hearing the same complaint time and time again. We've got a record of complaints being addressed either by noise ordinance violations, maybe some other police activity, whatever. This is over a period of time, and we're still not resolving it. Me personally, I think that we have to really give this a lot of attention, because neighborhoods matter, okay? And this is only my opinion, but because it's an ongoing issue, quite often, just in the short time that I've been here, even though it's been Ms. Rita coming forward, I've gone out to this business a number of times also. We have a nuisance abatement board. We have other ordinances that we can go ahead and look at possibly resolving an issue if it's ongoing. That's all I'm saying, it's not just a one-time issue, it's ongoing over a period of time in that I feel that we should be taking more action, putting heads together and making sure there's a presence there at night. And again, this is only me speaking, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilwoman Herrick?
I just have a question, so I better understand the process, and I know it's in the court system right now, so that anybody who might be having, facing a challenge with the nearby business might be able to know what power they have beyond calling because of noise violations and trash and the other things that we've heard have happened at that particular business. In the court system, and I don't know if somebody here can answer this question or not, but are Ms. Rita's concerns or previous communications part of the record that goes to the court? Or is it only the violations that have been cited through the police department or through neighborhood services? Is that, are her documents in there as well?
Our team provides all the context, so that would include complaints received and all, that all becomes part of the record, like a similar experience would be with Village Plaza, as we've been navigating that, which started as code complaints moved through a court process, moved to abatement. So the court process is sort of the, it's the linchpin in turning toward those heavier remedies, but that's what gets us the momentum to start in that process. So we're absolutely looking at all those different things. But as part of that, because we want a complete picture, we provide not only our reports, but all the context that goes along with them.
Okay, and so I have one more question, because I do recall you coming to us on numerous occasions and understand your frustration, and you're correct. I don't think anybody wants to have that as their neighbor in their neighborhood. In addition to the correspondence with Ms. Rita, had you had like a petition from neighbors that were signed so that it shows that it is beyond just your family that's being impacted? Because I would think that that would carry some influence as well.
Yes, we've had numerous petitions before this body, and we've had petitions while this body has been active as well. I brought some of them with me, I brought letters with me, I brought some neighbors to testify with me. So it's not just me, I may just be the face, because sometimes, like I have elderly neighbors who, number one, are like in their 90s, can't walk, don't speak English, it's hard for them to get out of their homes. I have other neighbors who have, you know, disabled children.
Oh, no, I understand, I don't mean to stop you, but just in the interest of time, you are very well spoken. And it's kind of you to take it on behalf of the neighborhood to come before council and to continue to push for this.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that their names were also recorded, so that there is documentation of how widespread the issue is.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Torri, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this time we have completed our 30 minutes of public comments, so anyone that did not have a chance to speak will have their reservation. You have, you, did you fill out a card?
I think it's on the previous, may I have a bill?
Okay, is it, okay, is it on an agenda item?
No, it's on what was brought up previously.
No, if it's on something that's already been brought up, then yeah, I'd like you to step forward and we'll resolve it now. We'll continue with you being the last speaker, okay?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Council members and chief. My name is Renee Rossler. I am a resident, born and raised here, still employed here in Dearborn for many years. I am going to jump on my sister's, my sister Dawn, who just spoke here too. I'm here on behalf of the retirees of the city of Dearborn. Just wanted to remind everybody that our retirees are former employers that have helped build and reshape our city for years and decades, and they've had the opportunity to work for a city, and it was their dream job for all employees. If you were given the opportunity to be hired for a position in the city, it was a lifelong career. Employees were dedicated all the way to retirement. The city only hired the best candidates and offered a decent pay with long-term benefits, including medical coverage. That was an important factor to all employees and still is. The medical coverage benefit offered was designed to cover an active employee and continue coverage as the employee ages and matures into retirement. Hang on one second, got other things going, okay. The reason why I'm here is some of the benefits that were promised to them should not be altered or changed or decreased in their insurance coverage. As a reminder that Dawn Noeak brought up, $500 is to go towards prescriptions and co-pays for the last two years, for two years. And I just don't know how that could figure to be something that somebody can manage. Let's see. It wouldn't even cover for a younger employee who may have extreme medical issues. Doesn't matter any age, it's not enough. I believe the plan was not negotiated or taken into consideration that this coverage now decreased is not for a one-size-fits-all senior retiree. Some retirees are less fortunate and have more doctor appointments and more prescriptions than others as they age. How can they plan to stay healthy and pay their prescriptions and co-pays with doctor's appointments and routines that they're on is very needed. They cannot work to make up for the loss at their age, and they are counted on benefits. They're counting on these benefits and the plans that they made, that they were offered. Can there be an increase to where they were before? I'm not asking for the city to pay more, just what they were promised and deserved. Some are struggling with fixed incomes, and this decrease puts stress and worry on them to make decisions as they don't know what to do and they run in circles with fear. That is not good. This stemmed from the decision that was made recently. No one in this room can say that they know what they are going through. No one looked into the reality of their everyday life. No survey and no meeting was available, just a decision that was made without understanding how the retirees do live day to day. The seniors need the promised insurance benefits to keep them alive and well as long as possible. They should not have to worry at this time of their lives. We are in a different time, and at one time, the city of Dearborn was a desired place to work and retire. My suggestion is to offer a tiered plan for the new hired employees coming in. It should not affect the retirees who worked hard for what was promised.
You have 30 seconds.
It is a shame that the retirees were targeted, a huge loss and unexpected. Imagine the shocking news and the pit in their stomachs when they learned and they received a letter from the city that they were going to provide less benefits. One of the components of your job is to make budget decisions based on the accounting for today, not affect the retirees and make such a dramatic change to their medical plans they worked so hard for. I'm asking that you revisit the budget and find another line item to make a reduction and to bring back the original benefits to your retirees so they can live their life as they should.
Time has expired. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, Councilman Pierce?
Thank you, Council President.
Sorry, we're going to have to close. After the Councilman's comments, we have exceeded the 30 minutes, we have to go on. But you're welcome to stay, for we have another 30-minute comment section at the end of the council.
The reason why-
Councilman Pierce?
The reason why I wanted to just say anything to Dawn or her sister. Dawn, in particular, when you were up earlier, is there a specific part of the benefit design that has actually impacted mom in that you didn't get your medical benefit card? You didn't get the PNA card, you know, the HSA card? I mean, is there anything in particular? No, no, I don't want to go into any big details here, but I'm going to tell you why I'm asking that. Have you gotten all your medical cards as promised to you?
Yes.
And you've been able to use them?
Yes.
Okay. What I was going to say is, we can address your complaint to somebody that might be here from the city to get your name, phone number, to be able to address those issues, if that was the case. But hearing that there are no particulars other than the benefit design that was offered after January 1st, so I just wanted to make sure if there was anything further than that, so.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, this time the public comment section portion will be closed. Before we move on to the consent agenda, are there any items that any member would like to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Abraham?
I'd like to make just a suggestion that the items that Councilman Al Sawafi, I believe he has item 6, 11, and 15. Oh, you're going to take those?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I was going to say, without his offer, maybe we would move them to the regular agenda and dispose them that way.
Yes, no, I reviewed them, and just for the record, Councilman Al Sawafi was here at our community of the whole meeting, where he offered some items and supportive items, which I have reviewed, and I will take those items for him. He was unable to attend tonight's meeting, so this way we can continue on the consent agenda.
So, if I could?
Yes.
Just for the record, then, item 6 you're going to offer, item 11, and item 15.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I have those.
Yeah, so-
6, 11, and 15, I have those.
Is there anything else?
Later, but they're the only ones on the consent.
Yeah, later, we can move them without his support, and we can have a personal member at that time. Is that good, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and then we'll go from there, is that-
Because his name's on the agenda.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. All right, so Mr. Clerk, hearing and seeing, well, we need to offer and support for this at this time, correct?
I'll offer.
Offered by Councilman Abraham, supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Mr. Clerk, can we have a real call vote?
Yes, this is the item 5 resolution by Abraham and Herrick approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect. Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Sarini.
Yes.
6 days the resolution passes and will move to item number 16 on the agenda. Resolution by Councilmembers Pierce and Enos approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of February 2nd, 2023.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the minutes? Okay, if hearing none, unanimous, roll be attached, next item, please.
Item 17, resolution by Councilmembers Enos and Pierce approving the minutes of the previous special closed meeting of February 7th, 2023.
Okay, are there any deletions, additions, or modifications to these minutes? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, roll be attached, next item, please.
Item 18, resolution by Councilmember Hamud and Abraham approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of February 7th, 2023.
Okay, again, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, roll be attached, next item, please.
Item 19, resolution in need of an offer, supported by Enos approving the request of Hassan Shami and Fedora Holdings LLC to conduct the Ramadan Suhur Festival, with all proceeds going to the Amity Foundation in the parking lot of Fairlane Town Center on the following dates and times in 2023, March 24th through March 26th, March 31st through April 1st, April 7th through April 9th, April 14th and April 15th, and that'll be from 11:00 PM until 3:00 AM, subject to certain stipulations and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, at this time, we need, we have a support by Councilman Enos. We would need an offer for this to be read in the record, is that correct, Mr. Romer?
That's correct.
Do we have an offer by any member? Offered by Councilman Pierce? Got that, clerk?
Yes.
All right, so this item is for an approval of a temporary land and structure use to allow Hassan Shami and Fedora Holdings LLC to conduct the Ramadan Suhur Festival at the Fairlane Town Center parking lot. The Ramadan Suhur Festival is held in the city of Dearborn with the purpose of providing the Dearborn community with a centralized location to congregate for Suhur in a fun and safe manner for the designated event festival dates. Last year, the entire event will, sorry, took place in the parking lot of Fairlane Town Center and did not impact any city street sidewalks and required minimal city support. The approved festival dates are March 24th, 25th, 26th, 31st, and April 1st, 7th, 8th, 9th, 14th, and 15th, from 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM. And April the 22nd, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM for the Eid celebration. The site layout and application fees have been approved by the Economic Development Department in accordance with the Fire and Police Department. The permit will be issued upon payment of fees. Event organizer will need to pay additional fees, additional application fees for public safety and inspection process, and inspection and plan review fees will be due at the time the permit is issued, and the public safety fees will be due by May 1st, 2023. Due to the size of the event and the logistics and the challenges, immediate effect is being requested. Are there any questions or comments on this item? From the council. Councilman Hamud?
So I see a similar memo to what we had last week. I thought there were going to be updates to reflect like a multitude of things we discussed on Thursday.
Okay, Chief, because I apologize, I was not, you know, for myself, I was not here Thursday. I did speak to the mayor on this, and this was my understanding. Is there some changes?
There were some changes, they were sent over this morning, but it looks like it didn't make it into the book. Director Torri is making copies currently for the council.
I didn't get them on the email either, so, unless anyone else got an updated memo.
No, if they're making copies, Jackie, our council has not received any changes to it. So at this time, if there's making, if he's making some copies to the changes, we'll have him come and speak at that moment. But I know there's some people that wanted to speak from the audience, they'd like to speak.
So-
Councilman Hamud?
If you'd like, we can move the agenda item for later until we actually get the memo.
No, he's bringing, I'd like to hear what they have to say, and then we could then look at it, we can always table it. So it's not an issue, but there's people here to speak on it. While we're waiting for the director to bring us the copies, we can look at it. If we feel we need more time, we can make a motion to table the item, it's not an issue.
Well, we wouldn't be motioning, Council President? We wouldn't be motioning to table the item, we'd be motioning to move it on the agenda, which is different.
Okay, well-
I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Romer? Is that what he's indicating is to, we wouldn't be able to, you're saying we're not able to table this item?
No, I said we wouldn't have to.
If what?
If we motioned to move to the next item, I think we can come back.
I understand, I already ruled that we're not moving to the next item, so I don't know why you're bringing up the next item. But I already ruled, we're not going past this item.
Okay.
So that doesn't matter to me. This item can be tabled, is that correct, Mr. Romer?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what we're going to do, we're going to let the people here that came to speak.
All right.
We're not going to delay them. The memo's not satisfactory, somebody can say it's not satisfactory, put it on the record, and then we'll go and deal with it. So would you like to go ahead and state your name and address for the record?
Hassan Shami, 130 North York, Dearborn, Michigan. I have a question. It says 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM, I believe I applied for 10:30 PM, does that matter?
It definitely matters. So if that's, if there's a change here, that's definitely-
That should be on the updated memo, Council President.
Okay, so you applied for-
Yeah, because the police is going to be there on 10, so we're going to open up a-
All right, so you're indicating that you're-
10:30 PM to 3:00 AM.
Got it, okay.
And then, spelling-wise, Fedora spelled wrong for contractual.
Okay, yeah, how was it spelled?
F-E-D-O-R-A.
It's also been misspelled on the agenda.
No, I'm sure. The spelling has to be corrected by the clerk, and it's not official till I sign it, when I get it in a couple of weeks. So we're going to make the change, somebody spelled it wrong, then, I mean, that happens. I don't think we can do anything today.
The dates are also incorrect.
So we're going to, that's what we're going through.
All right. If you'd like to do it live, we can.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, that's what I'm trying to do, Councilman, so you get, why don't you let me finish and then we'll go from there.
The days are correct, though. They did, they did take out the two extra days that we had on there. They're just the 10 days on here. So it's just the spelling and the time.
All right, so I show 11 days that I read into the record. So is there?
It's 10 days, 24, 25, 26, 31, 1, 7, 8, 9, 14, 15. That's 10 days.
All right, so the 22nd is not requested.
The 22nd is not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
For the April. I know, it's not.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's what I read into the record.
It's on the resolution.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I want to get it correct. 22nd?
15th is the last day.
All right, so there's no more Eid celebration from 22nd?
No, because it goes outside the.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, so, oh, all right, well, that's good. We're going to get the memo too. All right, and Mr. Shami, what else did you have that you noticed was, was inaccurate in this? So you're removing one day and the time, the spelling, and the 10:30 PM?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
If you guys have any questions, we're going to answer.
Yeah, we're going to have some, I'm sure we're going to have some questions, but I wanted to give you an opportunity if you had some changes and I appreciate that. I'm sure, let's have the director bring those up and then, yeah, you have a seat, Shami. We'll call you back up. Because I want to see what the council members, I want to give them a minute to look at this to make sure that this is accurate, because what I read was, was not what's going to be put in the resolution. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. All right, Mr. Shami, would you like to come forward? Some other questions came up as you deliberated. I understand the changes here will reflect those in the resolution that will give you the authority to commence the operation. In regarding to, again, I apologize, I was not here Thursday. In regarding to the Amity Foundation, that has, that was, let me say, your charity of choice. This is not done by the Amity Foundation, is that correct?
Yeah, we asked them if they can sponsor, so we can donate anything to them.
Okay, so, but they had, there's a significant difference between a nonprofit organization. Sure you're aware of that.
Yeah.
There's different federal laws, requirements for the public good. That foundation, I'm very familiar with, as you know.
Yeah, we're police separated.
It's separate.
Yeah.
I know, but that's, I want to make sure the question. This is being done by your organization, by your LLC, and you have chosen as your charity of choice, the Amity Foundation, like you did last year.
Yes.
And you're going to send them the proceeds.
Yes.
Okay, I also spoke to them and they indicated they also took in, they paid out the expenses as well.
Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to make sure that was reflected. I'm going to make sure on the record as well.
I just want to continue to speak on that point.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because again, throughout this memo, the petitioner that's in front of us, together with Amity Foundation, as this memo is written, are the ones requesting approval to operate the festival. They're the ones requesting the approval for the noise waiver. And based on our discussions on Thursday, I don't believe Amity Foundation is an active participant in the festival at all. They're not an operator.
They pay, they pay the expenses. That's how we give them all the profits.
Right, I understand, but the councilman's question, I spoke to the Amity Foundation, president, founder, and he indicated that you had selected him as your charity of choice. So Councilman Abraham is exactly correct on point. They are not the operator at all, so they have, they have no operational aspect or condition or key on it. So they cannot choose what to pay or not pay. It's being sent by yourself, by your organization. They are not, they're not, they're not operating this organization. They're not operating this festival. So what that means is, they're not there, if they receive from you a check and expenses, then they pay them accordingly. That's what they're choosing to do as the charity of choice. They don't have, they're not managing it on a day-to-day operation, and that's what the councilman is indicating.
I'm trying to understand, because that didn't come up Thursday, that they were paying all the expenses. You said they were getting all the proceeds.
Well, the expenses are, so.
I'm asking him.
I'm part of the festival.
I know, he's addressing, Mr. Shami, when he addresses you, then he was.
He was here Thursday and I'm trying to risk it clarity. Because I guess here's where I'm leading to. If they're part of the festival, then they should also have to produce a certificate of insurance as well.
Right.
If, if we're requiring that. Yeah, I, I guess I'm asking who, who is the applicant and who is signing? Because when we were here Thursday, you indicated they were not actively involved in the festival.
Okay.
That they were only receiving the proceeds from the festival, which you were operating.
Okay, so when I was here, the first thing I explained to you guys was the difference in the application in the city of Dearborn compared to other cities.
I'm not talking about the application.
I know, I'm just, I'm just, just because Councilman Sarini wasn't here. So they're not operating the festival. We are operating the festival. But all the expenses and the profits go through the Amity Foundation. That's why we applied through them, just like last year. So I just followed what we did last year. Now, if it's a, if whatever's easiest for you guys to approve, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Councilman Abraham, did you?
You're the, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied where he's, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because we're trying to get the right answer, so.
Yeah.
Could you state your name?
Hassan Al T, 223711, so what I was trying to say here is in most cities, when major events such as this happen, especially when they are in coordination with a 501(c)(3), right? We're going to apply, we're absorbing the risk of what's going on with this festival. You know, we're putting on a 10-day festival in the city, so we're taking on all of that, the risk, the operations, and the management. A 501(c)(3) like the Amity Foundation is not going to have the resources or the people to manage the day-to-day events. So even if they wanted to put on the entire event, they would still look elsewhere for management of the event. So if that helps answer what, what the guidelines of this is, is that we are operating and managing the event. We're applying for the event. The Amity Foundation is a sponsor of the event in which we're putting on in the city.
Right, yeah, you can frame me either the way, the way I, the way I would frame it. And I would agree solely that the Amity Foundation doesn't have the ability to put it on. The bottom line is the Amity Foundation is Mr. Fedora, Mr. Shami's and his LLC's charity of choice is the proper technical terms. That's how I phrased it. I talked to them directly. They are not operating it, so I don't feel that they have to put insurance on it, but I can understand the questioning from the council. I know, and I understand how it's done in other cities and stuff, and I'm not worried how it's done in other cities. I'm more worried it's done in this city. So I want to make sure that we do it correct. We do agree, and I did speak with people in our department regarding a more streamlined process to allow for this. I am familiar with cities that indicate what charity you're affiliated with without linking them to the festival indirectly. Because legally and operational wise, we cannot tell you, if you decided you don't want to give the money to that charity, it's not in our control. Correct. I just want to make sure you knew that, we know that, and that's what the issue is. So I just want to make sure that the council is abreast of all their, their questions. So Councilman Abraham, do you have some follow-ups on that?
Just one question for legal, just trying to reconcile the LLC, Fedora LLC, to what is in the actual resolution that we were just asking on.
Yeah, so I think that Councilman Abraham's point, it's more pointed than whether they're a sponsor or not. So we're going to determine the nonprofit's involvement based off the application. We've had three different versions, I guess, before us, which this one says Mr. Shami, not your LLC. We've seen the LLC, and then we've also seen the LLC or Mr. Shami and Amity. So the question that I think the councilman's trying to get to is who is hosting the festival? The LLC, you, or the LLC, you, and/or the, the nonprofit?
The LLC, not the old LLC.
Okay, so I, I think.
You're a member.
A member of the LLC.
And I think to Councilman Abraham's point, then we need to clean up the resolution, because it includes, it just says Mr. Shami, not the LLC, and it includes Amity.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Mr. Romer, and I'm sure your attorney would advise you by putting your name individually, that you're now personally liable.
Yes, yes.
The whole purpose of a limited liability corporation, the state is missing it, is to avoid personal liability. So I know, but for the future, you should apply as Fedora LLC for everything, because that membership, you are the member of that. So that, that's the way it should be done, and I understand where the confusion is.
So do I, so do I.
Yeah, so for the future, yeah, appreciate it.
Do you recall what you put on the application?
It goes Hassan Shami and the Amity Foundation.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Torri's here too. Is he still here? Yeah, so Mr. Torri, let me have you come up, because we got to get the application corrected. So Mr. Torri, just, I understand that once the council does approve, if the council does approve this with immediate effect so that the resolution is proper, and I ask, Jekki, that I see the resolution before George, so we can make sure I sign out on it, that's proper. We're going to get the dates corrected. The application, and Mr. Shami, please speak up if this is not correct, should state Fedora, Fedora, is it Holdings?
Fedora Holdings.
LLC, LLC, with charity of choice to be the Amity Foundation. That's the way it should be listed. Mr. Shami, do you have any objection to that? All right, so please make sure that's corrected. I know that we had several memos, and I understand the logistics of this. Mr. Shami, nobody, you know, I was there last year. I think you see me there with my son. I found, I know that a lot of hotels, the people came in from all over. I think it was a tremendous event. I think that we just want to make sure everything is done properly. We appreciate you coming early so that we can get these things resolved, but I just want you to have a little patience so that we can get it, and every year will be, you know, easier to go through as well. So, Mr. Torri, you understand what we need?
It'll be done, yes.
Councilman Paris, you have some questions?
Just one, just to make sure that this is correct. Under our backup material under fiscal impact, the one that was originally before us still shows the $56,375 and then some other fees for public works and the fire department. That $56,000 plus is from public safety. I just want to make sure the fiscal impact on what has been handed out is the correct and accurate amount, since we have 10 dates. So the $41,199.77 now for public safety is correct?
The net is correct, yes. The one that was handed out is the correct amount.
Okay, and then it would not change then, because static, it's the same amount regardless. Seems to me that the Public Works 600 and the Fire Department 1800 would still remain in effect regardless of the number of dates.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that information is correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember?
So in the actual council resolution, which is the legally binding aspect of this, I believe we're going to edit the actual names applying for this. Additionally, there's public safety and fire fees. We had, I mean, now that we're here and we're rehaving the same discussion kind of, did we amend this to meet the for-profit rate as opposed to a nonprofit rate yet?
So this, our understanding was the nonprofit rate was to apply to this event, so covering the costs. That's what's in the, the resolution that was just handed out, the numbers that we just discussed. That, that is the fee for, our understanding for a nonprofit applying for this festival.
Okay, but it's not a nonprofit applying for the festival.
Okay, I apologize. My understanding was that a nonprofit rate was to be applied for this festival, so that's what we calculated. Well, again, I, I think the confusion is, yeah, Councilman, one second. Again, the confusion, I want to make sure we understand, this is the council's aspect of what we want to do. So it's, it's not up to no one but the council. The charity of choice and the money has been in the last year and the previous years donated directly to the Amity Foundation in its entirety. I know that for a fact, because I verified it. So that has been determined that that would be a nonprofit rate, by the way, which is a 10% differential. If the council feels that that is not sufficient, that's up to this body.
Well, I guess my question would be from a legal aspect, there's no way you could actually publicly verify that. The only way, a, a for-profit corporation is not required legally to file 990 like a nonprofit. So you as a government could not actually, unless a, you know, unless you chose to open up your finances for your whole company to us, if you, you as a government cannot actually monitor or force or regulate a company to make it donate money to a nonprofit, so.
Well, I think I said that on the record.
Yeah, right, exactly, which we said earlier.
Right.
So, so, so my point is, the, based on the actual thing that we are approving, it is a for-profit company that is applying for a for-profit event, and then they will, out of the kindness of their hearts, and whatever agreement they have with Amity is their business, choose to donate that, that money as, as per their interest. So if we wanted to choose as a government to provide funding or a subsidy or a deal to and not any nonprofit that comes and applies, we have to treat that equally. Because if we were to start picking and choosing which companies we provide discounts for, then you could get into legal hot water, because in my personal opinion, I think that's an equal protection issue. But we can also talk to our city legal as to whether he feels that it falls within a burden, whether we, if we start giving nonprofit rates for for-profit companies.
Any other?
Can you address?
Well, I'd like to see, yes, you can, definitely, but I want to, I want to hear what the council has to say, because I don't think anything new's been stated. We indicated that it is, and Councilman Abraham, we alluded to it, we had the application changed as a donation to the charity. It's this body's decision whether they want to change it and increase the rates by 10% or not. Because we have the ability to determine whether we feel we're comfortable that this is going to the nonprofit. And that's up to us whether we want to or not. That's why I think the Councilman Abraham's point, he wanted to make sure that it was not indicated that the Amity Foundation was the operator and the, and the aspect of this, this event. So it's really up to the council whether we want to decide. Yes?
If I may?
Yes, Chief?
So just for clarification, when the initial application was submitted, it was submitted under the Fedora Holdings and Amity Foundation. I think I agree with Council President as it relates to the donation made to the nonprofit, that we would stand with the nonprofit rates. I think the way we've kind of structured, I think to Councilman Hamud's point, we've taken this under serious consideration is what, how we charge organizations. I think we've had this conversation among this body for several times. And, you know, we've ensured that we are in line and consistent with our process.
Councilwoman Herrick, you have something to add?
Well, Councilman Hamud expressed my concerns that we are possibly setting a dangerous precedent by choosing one LLC, one for-profit entity to receive a nonprofit rate. If it was as originally stated that it was the two of them taking on equal responsibility for running the, taking the risk of running the event and how they chose to share their profits, I guess that would be different, but I, I do have a concern of, that the LLC itself is the entity that's any, any nonprofit, and this is nothing personal against what you're doing, because I, I believe wholeheartedly in what you're doing. But any nonprofit agency could hire a for-profit company to run a fundraiser for them. And I guess my question is, how is it done in other cities that it's fair compared to as if that nonprofit itself did its own fundraiser and took on all the risks?
In, in other cities, and I'm sure, I don't, the chief wants to speak to, in other cities such as, I'm not sure in Fairendale, but I know in Plymouth, they have an application process that indicates if you're affiliated with a nonprofit and if the money's going to the nonprofit, and then they give them a nonprofit rate. But again, we don't have that. We haven't established that. If you recall, this council was very active telling the mayor that we needed some hard-line rules. There was many organizations paying zero, some paying tens of thousands of dollars, and we felt there was an inequity. And now we came up with this nonprofit and profit, and there's a 10% differential. So I, I think your, your points are well-taken. I, I don't disagree with any of them. I just want to make sure that we understand that, you know, if you look at other cities and what they do, if you want to use that, they have, it's, it's run by the LLCs and they check off what charity, and the charity is not required to apply your insurance, and that, and they do get that discount rate, but it's up to this council, because there was for many, many years, never a single policy on any of this regarding charging anybody a dollar for nonprofits. And this council and their administration agreed that that was a, a bad policy and we had to get our, our house in order as indicated regarding budgeting. You know, we have to make sure that we charge effectively what we're being paid out. And, and that's why this council was active, to make sure we came up with these rates and the mayor agreed to it. So at this point, I think it's up to the council. There's a valid argument for either way, the 10% differential or not. And, and that's the difference at this point. Am I correct, the chief, regarding the 10% is the difference?
For the.
If, if, if the council chooses to change this application to a for-profit, the fees would increase by 10%.
So what, we charge cost. Essentially, that's the nonprofit rate, any cost that is incurred by the, the city. But Council President, if I may, while I have the floor, one thing I want to reiterate is the fact that I think we don't want to miss the fact that the proceeds will be donated to a nonprofit. The mayor is committed to ensuring that organizations, very similar to what we do at Homecoming, where nonprofit organizations are, receive, you know, a generous donation, depending on what year, generous donation from the, from the festival. So I just wanted to reiterate the fact that the administration is well-aware of all the concerns that the council raised. And as an administration, we're very committed to organizations that assist and help with, where a very great example is Amity Foundation, who served the city and its residents very well. So I just wanted to reiterate the fact that also in the past, these, these situations and and regarding the charging of city services have been under the mayor's discretion. Therefore, what is in front of you is the mayor's recommendation. So, I would recommend that the council take in consideration that what you have in front of you is the recommendation of the mayor.
Correct, thank you, chief. And also just for the record too as well, in the past, you know, costs were indicated to the council as we're covering our costs for a police officer, but we didn't include their benefits. To me, that's not really the cost. This mayor has agreed that we had to make sure that are in line. As far as the Amity Foundation, I think everybody knows where they stand. My granddaughter's already received three or four books from that program for the child. So, I, I think it's a tremendous, and I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to take on this type of work, this type of work. And it does benefit the community, so I do appreciate it. Councilman Hamud, let's see where we end up on this.
Yeah, so, so one thing we discussed on Thursday, but you weren't here for that discussion, was we were trying to understand where Amity Foundation stands on all this, and that's why I recommended that they send a representative here today.
I, there's no, there, the organization, I spoke to him. He has had a big event recently and left out of town for vacation. He's barely accessible. And he, he chose, I talked to him, he chose not to come up. He indicated that he was selected as the charity of choice like he had been in the past.
Right, and, and so I understand that. But once again, from, from a strictly legal perspective, my understanding is we have, first of all, with Homecoming, that's a city-owned operated event. We actually see all of the funding and where it goes, and we actually choose those expenditures.
Nobody, you went already, you went over there.
But I, yeah, but we never did it, we never did that in this meeting. So, we get a home, hold on, please.
Yeah, I understand.
We get a Homecoming report, we actually understand where the money flowed in. It's manned by city personnel, you know, it's, it's very outlined and we know exactly what we're approving. At the end of the day, and this is, this is a fine event. I attended it myself last year. I think it's a, a great impact for the community. At the end of the day, it goes back to what are we actually approving on the piece of paper? Which is, and last year, I didn't actually understand what was, how exactly it flowed through until, you know, afterward, I, I realized, you know, I thought there was going to be kind of a big report where we'd see the financials and everything. We, we never got that, so I, I misunderstood what was going to happen because I thought it was more like Homecoming. It would have been the city. So, so my, my point being, you know, thinking that it was, it was like Homecoming, that was my mistake. So, my point with this is, at the end of the day, and, and there's, not that there's anything wrong with making money, you know, I'm all for businesses in a, in a lot of ways. So, and what, and what a business chooses to do with its money is its business. And I want to make that clear. And we are not as a city asking you to open up your financial records or anything like that. But we just have to approve it, in my opinion, as a for-profit company that is performing a, a very nice festival for the whole city, in, in the city. Because at the end of the day, we're also providing a special land use. So, my, where I stand on it also is first, this resolution needs to actually be written tightly and properly, which it's not right now. And the actual names of the people need to be on here for when we approve it. And the rates need to be set to the organization that is applying for the actual rate, in my opinion.
Okay, I understand. But just so everybody understands, this resolution is being generated as we speak. It is signed when it's provided to me, and then I read over and sign off on it, after legal looks at it as well. So, we will make sure that the spelling and everything is correct. The question is, what do we want to do with it? So, right now, we have a motion by Councilman Paris and Enos. And just so everybody understands, the, and chief, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. The nonprofit rate is the true cost to the city. The profit rate is ten percent above the true cost, which all that means is less money will go to the charity. That's where we have to decide what we want to do here, so we can move this forward.
Well, I, I actually have a problem with that statement. We don't, yeah, we don't actually know where the money goes if we provide a subsidy to a corporation, which is what this is. If we wanted to provide a subsidy to Amity, we actually, as a city, could actually write a check for the differential and hand it to Amity Foundation, which would be a cleaner paperwork trail to know where the money went as opposed to handing it as a subsidy to perform an event. So, I just want to make that clear.
Well, I understand, but in, in any business, since you're in business, you should understand.
I do.
When any cost increase, who pays the additional cost? The end user, which means that.
The business.
It's half dozen one another.
It actually gets written off.
It's half dozen one another.
Okay.
Anything that's increased on one side gets passed off on the end. There's no other way to come out of it. So, it's, it depends on how you want to frame it. But at this point, we have a motion and a support. So, we need to make a motion if we want to change it.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
I, I would also point out that the difference between giving a nonprofit for-cost rate and giving a, a for-profit rate is with nonprofits, the city and taxpayers pre-fund the money to provide the services that are then utilized by a private entity. Versus when you have a for-profit company, that they are making a profit, therefore, the city employee, the city taxpayers should also receive a benefit off of that as well. So, that's my point as to why I believe personally that there should be a differential between a nonprofit versus a for-profit company.
Right, there is a differential.
Yeah, but just wanted to make sure that we're cool with that.
I think every, I think everybody in this, in this audience knows there's a ten percent differential.
No, I understood, I was understanding, I was trying to give the, the thought process behind that.
I, I think we're all in agreement. I think we just decided which way we need to go. Councilwoman Herrick.
Well, one, a question. It's not actually an even ten percent differential. It's the cost, chief, it's the cost, as you were saying, of the actual expenses of the city that are, are offset, not a percentage of.
I don't.
Multiplied.
I, I think what Council President is referring to is not, the differential is for what the for-profit rate would be. Essentially, the nonprofit rate would be cost, true cost to the city, yeah.
Right.
No, it's, the nonprofit rate we have written right here, correct? On the item nineteen from the executive summary on the fiscal perspective. Councilman Paris read it directly. That's the nonprofit rate, yes?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we change it to a non, to a profit rate, would it go up by ten percent?
Yes, for sure.
I know, I know, but I mean, I, I mean, that's a very simple answer. It's yes. So, it's ten percent more than this. So, what's the total, I don't know why they're discussing it. We've already made it very clear. What's in front of us was the mayor's recommendation of a nonprofit, and the nonprofit rate was the forty-one thousand, one ninety-nine seventy-seven plus the twenty-four hundred dollars. So, if we choose as this body to change this to a profit rate, it would increase this amount by ten percent, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Want to sit through the math, or are we good?
No, 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 if it's an even ten percent.
I just wanted to make sure.
But I did not think that was the case.
It is.
But I did want to follow up on what Councilman Hamud was talking about. And Chief of Staff brought up the comparison to Homecoming. It is different because Homecoming is a city-run event that's free for the city residents for the most part. And any nonprofit in the past, and I'm not sure exactly how we did it last year because it, it was a new model. But in the past, any nonprofit that received any funds from Homecoming was what they earned. They provided a service, selling something at Homecoming or assisting by providing events, things like that. They were actually being reimbursed as promised from their arrangement with the Homecoming organizers. Specifically, one example would be Fort, the Fortson Alumni Association receiving dollars back after Homecoming because they provided a service of selling beer and they were guaranteed, there was a contract and they were guaranteed so much from the beer sales. So, it is different, it's a very different situation than we're talking about here.
Okay, chief, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, so, the comparison to the, the Homecoming was essentially the idea of nonprofits being involved in, you know, a structure, a festival of that nature. So, trying to bring a comparison that would help the council kind of understand the, the, at least the analogy of a nonprofit organization working with an entity and them benefiting from the, the festival. So, that is the reason I, I presented that example, but.
Okay.
All right.
I just wanted to make it clear to the public that it was different. Thank you.
Okay, council, did you have the same point? Because I have Councilman Abraham waiting.
No.
Is that on the same point? No, he has something different.
Something different.
Something different, okay. Councilman Abraham.
I have one, one thing to add. I'm, I'm looking at the resolution, the draft that was just handed to us. And as we move forward through potentially approving this item, I can only speak for me, but one of the recommendations I have to edit this resolution in front of us is first to take paragraph one, two, three, four, five, which is a whereas, and it discusses the public safety fees. And I'd like to make that part of the actual resolution with the resolve that the Fedora Holding Company will be responsible for paying the public safety and fire fees of forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents, that paragraph. And then I think we already covered this, but I'll just mention it quickly. The other changes I have is adding the Fedora Holding LLC to the resolution and changing the start time from eleven P M. to ten thirty P M.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Okay, so, to codify what Councilman Abraham's asking for, which I'm in agreement is so that the public understands the resolutions, the whereas are not legally binding, the resolves are the legally binding aspects. So, I would agree one hundred percent that the, the whereas clause should be removed down to the bottom as a resolve clause. But we need to have Councilman Paris and Enos in agreement with that. Councilman Paris, do you have an objection to that?
I don't.
I don't.
Councilman Enos?
I don't.
Okay, no objection. Mr. Clerk, the whereas section shall be removed down to the bottom to be indicated as resolved. And also the resolve that the request of Hassan Shammy shall be striked and Amity Foundation shall be striked and should be indicated as Fedora, F E D O R, holding, F E D O R A Holdings LLC. And these dates are correct and the time should be indicated at ten thirty P M. to three A M. There was an eleven in there. And this resolution does not have, let me make sure, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Has ten dates, and you understand those are firm dates. And again, if there's an issue, you will come back to the council for a seek approval. So, Mr. Clerk, do you have those changes?
Yes.
Councilman Paris and Councilman Enos are in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from my colleagues? Councilman Paris.
Just a comment that's been brought up about the LLC and the charitable organization. Why would we not then, just on the application, just for simplicity's sake, just go ahead and have that extra line in there for the Amity Foundation getting the proceeds as indicated? Period, I mean, why can't we add that to the application? We brought that conversation earlier about other communities and that would be a safeguard for situations like that that is very clear about what the responsibility of the LLC would be or the organizer of the event and where that money is going to. A certain amount of proceeds going to the Amity Foundation, and that way there is that separation.
I, I can answer that, Council President.
I mean, I can answer, yeah, but if you'd like to, I mean.
But it, it's very simple because the application for the, the use of the parcel is not, it does not care where the proceeds of the festival go. It's, the zoning request is related to the applicant, which here is the LLC. So, that's exactly why the application does not contain any such requirement, nor will it. I mean, it's, it's that simple.
And again, we can't tell a for-profit company what to do with the funding. That's why the whole discussion became. All right, any other questions from my colleagues?
You, yes or no?
Okay. At this time. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have an offer and support, and you have the stated aspects?
Yes, I do.
I motion to amend the resolution to reflect a for-profit rate for the public safety and fire fees.
Mr. Over, for, for procedural aspect, Councilman Hamud would like to make a motion to amend, yeah, this resolution to included, to increase, to increase the fees by ten percent to make it a, a nonprofit rate.
For-profit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, for-profit rate, I apologize.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, no, I don't want to cut you off, go ahead.
I just want to make sure there's an offer and support on the table, but we have a motion, so we would have to get now a support to this motion, is that correct?
But what I would tell you procedurally is you have an offer and support to a motion. There's discussion, it needs to be voted on unless the person making the offer is going to modify the motion.
Okay, so.
So, you can't motion to amend?
There's, procedurally, there's an offer and support. You don't have competing motions at this point. You have a, a motion with support on the table that's up for discussion and then it can be voted on because there is an offer and support.
Okay. So, at that point, barring, I would have to wait for, for one of the council members, either Paris or Enos, to indicate an agreement or if they stay silent, to me, that means we are continuing as, as stated, is that correct? Mr. Over.
Yeah, unless they're going to firmly say they're not going to amend the motion and then it would go to vote unless there's further discussion.
Okay.
No, I will not amend it.
Okay, so, Councilman Paris, okay, Councilman Enos, you're good as stated?
Then my last comment on the thing is, I still think we're actually putting the city into legal hot water on an equal protection argument because then any for-profit company that comes before us can request a nonprofit rate.
Okay. Councilwoman Herrick, do you have something to add?
Just a, just a question. So, so at this point, we're looking at removing Amity Foundation from the resolution on the whereas.
That's correct.
It's only going to be Fedora. If we left Amity there, therefore, you do have an actual partnership between a for-profit and a nonprofit. What is, why can we not do that? Why can we not leave Amity there?
And Amity, Amity Foundation is not here to, to represent whether they wanted to be there or not. I spoke to the, the founder and director directly and he indicated that they are, they are chosen as a charity of choice and that's the way they do it in the nonprofit industry. So, therefore, he's not on the resolution. That, that was directly from the founder and operator of the, of the Amity Foundation. I called him myself personally, so. And they didn't send a representative and nor are they here to speak. So, we have to take it as it's, as it's face value.
And I would just point out, nonprofit or charity of choice has no legal requirement or attachment or standing to it.
I think we've made it abundantly clear that the LLC, we have no control over what the LLC does with the funding.
Correct.
I think that's crystal clear. So, at this point, Mr. Clerk, at this point, is there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Anyone else from the audience? Okay, at this point, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on this?
Councilmember Enos?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember. Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Zerini?
Yes.
Six yeas, the resolution passes.
Okay, thank you, good luck, Mr. Mr. Shammy, good luck. Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item twenty, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Abraham authorizing to waive certain regulations in the Code of Ordinances that govern outdoor dining and hours of operation to support brick-and-mortar restaurants, coffee houses and smoking lounges during Ramadan in requesting immediate effect.
Okay, let's give it a second here for, for. Okay, in twenty twenty-two, the county, the city, the council resolution, the council adopted a resolution of measures to promote brick-and-mortar restaurants during the month of Ramadan, allowing for expansion of outdoor seating and hours of operation within the city code of ordinances and the zoning ordinance. This resolution seeks to establish the following temporary modifications, which will expire on April twenty-first of twenty twenty-three, to allow for existing restaurants to provide or expand outdoor dining, commerce, outdoor dining seating, permit outdoor dining and coffee houses to operate between the hours of seven A M. and three A M. And to permit smoking lounges to operate from ten A M. to three P, to three A M. This resolution allows the community to celebrate Ramadan in the traditional fashion by allowing for evening gatherings over meals and is requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick.
Just a thank you to the administration for making it, for accommodating businesses, small businesses in particular in Dearborn, to be able to operate and provide these services to the public during this exciting time of year, during Ramadan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Just for my, chief of the resolution, this is still, and for the director, this is still giving the, the city and your department delegating authority for you guys to do these approvals from the director, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing, seeing none, unanimous, roll be attached, next item, please.
Item 21, resolution by councilmembers Humud and Abraham, authorizing the city to host Ramadan nights in West Dearborn, West Downtown Dearborn for food truck vendors by approving the weekly closure of West Village Drive between Mason and Monroe from 7:00 PM on Thursdays until 7:00 AM on Mondays from March 22nd, 2023 to April 21st, 2023, and approving the closure of parking lot H from 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM each Thursday to Saturday during the event period. Also authorizing to waive the noise ordinance during the duration of the event and authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate the fees and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the city of Dearborn will host the Ramadan nights in West Dearborn on West Village Drive between Mason Street and Monroe Street from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM every Thursday through Saturday from March 22nd through April 21st of 2023. This event will ensure a healthy and safe and safety for those observing Ramadan, including safety in dining, traveling, and gathering together. The dates for the festival are March 23rd, 24th, 25th, 30th, 31st, April 1st, 6th, 7th, 8th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 20th, and 21st. All food trucks are required to have a Wayne County Food Service license and the city of Dearborn vendor license as well and a special land use permit. They will also be required to attend a vendor clinic for vehicle inspections and event instructions. It is being requested that the city council approve the closure of West Village Drive on Mason Street and Monroe Street starting on March 22nd and ending on April 21st for each Thursday through Monday, beginning at 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. There'll be no traffic issues, traffic access to the Wagner parking deck, which will eliminate any issues on that lot. The closure will also allow for dining and protection of the patrons that are observing and coming to patronize the area. It is also requested that the city council approve the closure of the parking lot H from 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM each Thursday through Saturday during the event period and to waive the noise ordinance during this duration of the event from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Thursdays through Saturdays. I think same timeframe from March 22nd to April 21st. It's further requested that the city council authorize the finance director to recognize and receive this event and appropriate the same amount towards expenditures within the Department of Public Works' operating budget. And I see our finance director is here as well, if we have any questions for him. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have, I just.
Councilman Abraham?
Just a point of clarification, a lot of dates flying around. The memo states that this starts on March 22nd, which is a Wednesday, but the festival starts on the Thursday. So are we closing the street on Wednesday?
Let's see, we're going to have the finance director. Are you going to answer that one?
No, sir, I have no information on street closing.
Okay, nice jacket.
And I guess the same thing, because in the end, it says the implementation timeline is till April 22nd, but the backup says the festival runs through April 21st, which is a Friday.
Yeah, that's your department, so let's see what we got to date issue. Mr. Kennedy, you stay here, we want to get some questions from you.
I apologize, council, for the confusion. Again, Jordan Torri, Economic Development Director. So the version that we just handed, essentially, the discrepancy there is we are closing the street on Thursday, not Wednesday. We're just covering the fact that the time period begins on the 22nd. As it relates to the 24th, so.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I apologize.
How does it start on the 22nd? I thought it started at, what's the date start? 7:00 AM on, 22nd is a Wednesday. So I guess what I'm asking, is it starting at 7:00 AM on the 22nd, which is a Wednesday? Or is it starting at 7:00 AM, which is the 23rd, which is a Thursday?
Hello, Laura Sanchez, Economic Development. I've been working on this event for the past few weeks. So March 23rd is the official start date. It starts at 7:00 PM. The parking lot and the West Village Drive will be closed at that time. March 22nd is only there to emphasize that that is the start of the Ramadan period and the events will only be taking place on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays.
So the street will not be closed on Wednesday?
Correct. It's only Thursdays starting at 7:00 PM.
Just to be fair to the businesses, so they have some certainty on what to expect, thank you.
Thank you, it's Councilman Abraham. All right, any other, sorry, did you like to add something?
Council President, yes, please, I apologize. I just want to clarify, just for the point of the businesses, our liaisons have been going out to the West Downtown. We've communicated the correct dates and times to them, so they're all very aware in terms of we are even providing contact for any deliveries or anything that they need. So they do have all this information.
Right, and let's be honest, in practical operation, that place, that area is closed anyways.
Correct.
There's parking out there, Councilman Abraham. I've complained a lot about it because I know they're trying to get in and out of there for like carryout. It really should be closed in the long term in the scheme for the access of the business, but that's for another time. So I, but I do think this is a good solution, but I appreciate their comments. Any other comments? Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything for us from Finance Department regarding this?
Unless you have a question.
No, we're good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice jacket, though. Thanks, guys. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Oh, okay, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Yeah, since we have to write this up and we want it accurate for the minutes as well.
Yes.
I think I just heard that it was going to start at 7:00 PM, but the document that we have in front of us here says it's going to start at 10:00 PM. Is it the roads that are closing at 7:00 and the festival starting at 10:00? Or is the roads and the festival starting at 7:00?
Okay, I have, yes. Okay, good.
So the festival itself will be taking place 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. But to allow the trucks enough time to come in and settle in, the road will be closed starting at 7:00 PM on Thursdays and that is why we're closing until 7:00 AM on Monday mornings, just to allow enough time for us to get the trucks out, clean anything potentially, et cetera.
So the festival itself will be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, but the road will still be closed on Sunday?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I know there's a lot of dates, so I do appreciate it. I had to redo it, so I understand. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing, seeing none, unanimous, roll be attached, next item, please.
Item 22, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Humud, awarding a contract to Deponio Contracting, Inc., lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount of $2,908,529.80 for water main replacement and asphalt street resurfacing, Phase 1, 2023. Also authorizing a contingency in the amount of $200,000 and authorizing the city engineer to execute all change orders and modifications that utilize all approved contingency and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the water main replacement and asphalt street pavement resurfacing are annual contracts to replace aged water mains and to resurface deteriorating streets. Under this contract, the water main will be replaced and the street will be resurfaced in the following locations. Keen Street from South Telegraph to Outer Drive. Harvard Street from Cornell Street to Greenlee Park Street. Venice Street from Snow Street to Carlisle Street will have resurfacing only. Purchasing on behalf of the Department of Public Works and Engineering Division recommends to award the contract for water main replacement asphalt for Deponio Contracting, which submitted the lowest responsible and responsible bid and has performed satisfactory in the past contracts. Approximately 3,3530 linear feet of 6-inch sewer diameter will be replaced with a new 8-inch diameter water main and approximately 5,211 linear feet of roads will be resurfaced with new concrete curbs and gutter pans. Letta water service lines will be replaced from the city's water main to 18 inches inside the basements for approximately 20 houses as part of this project. In addition, a contingency of $200,000 is being requested to be allowed for unforeseen conditions and variances that encounter during the execution of this project. It's further being requested the city engineer be authorized to execute all change orders and modifications that utilize all approved contingencies. Immediate effect is being requested as well. Any questions or comments on this item? I had some comments, so I'm glad you came up, if you'd like to just name for the record. Okay, thank you. I know Deponio, I think my concern only is Deponio Contract has done a lot of work in the city in the past. Some people would say it's satisfactory, some people would disagree. My concern was in the lack of, in the past and under your leadership and Director Hawkins regarding the actual means watching of this contract. When is this being handled, in the summer? Will it be?
It'll be starting spring, summer, fall.
Okay, because I know in our contract, we indicate that they must have street sweeping, water, I know, water trucks. But I've personally been to the locations where the trucks are parked and they're not using them. And I know it's our job, you know, we do a contract, we expect them to reach, to abide by the bid specs, but that doesn't always happen. So my concern is, is in the summer, these projects create a tremendous amount of, it's not just inconvenience, but you know, the dust. And that's why we, in our bid, ask them to have water trucks and street sweeping. But that doesn't mean they park them on the side.
Right.
And Deponio, I've seen in the past, so I just want to make it abundantly clear that we want to make sure when we're spending multi-millions of dollars that we get, we'll be bargained for.
Correct.
And I don't know if you have the manpower to make sure that you check the contract as it's being done.
So we do have a new position that is going to be posted for engineering. It's going to be a senior project engineer. So it'll be taking, it'll be replacing Saoud's old position, who will oversee these contracts and they'll be the ones keeping up on it. Saoud's a city engineer now, he's no longer.
Right, so I know he is now, so, but he was in charge of it before?
Correct.
Okay, well.
I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know for sure because Al Lowbeck was the assistant city engineer prior to.
I understand, I want to go forward, but I want to make it clear.
That you want, yes.
I will be driving by, yes, because I don't, what I've seen in these past, and it's not just for Deponio themselves, but they have won a tremendous amount of bids. And we don't expect, when they go home in the night, to leave stuff all over the place.
Correct.
A construction site is still a neighborhood and still a community. They need to put their stuff away and they cannot park a water truck out there for decoration. It has to be used. And this happened last time and it was under your tutelage. And it was very bad over on Michigan Avenue west of Telegraph in that corner.
And yeah.
It was a big project and there was a lot of dirt that was left unkept. It was very, very unsafe because they stop at 5:00, people come home. There shouldn't be debris all over and that's our job. And I know that our contract indicates what we require. So I want to make sure it's clear that we, that we have this being checked on. You know, the quality of the work is, I don't disagree that they've done a good job and they performed, especially in today's climate.
There are contractors that's finishing their projects.
They're finishing, yeah, they're not leaving us in the hang.
Yes, they're finishing their projects, they're finishing within budget. I mean, they're doing a good job for us in that way.
Correct, correct, but there's more to the surface of the contract.
Yeah, absolutely, so street sweeping and the water issues will definitely keep up on and maintain.
And the fact that they need to put away their equipment.
Equipment.
Yeah, because it's a safety.
We let them store it at our yard. We will allow them to store it at our yard.
We're storing it at our yard, then it won't be left on the street.
Correct.
Okay, so we should be in good shape.
All right.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing, hearing and seeing none, unanimous, roll be attached, next item, please.
Item 23, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Humud, awarding a sole-source contract to charge infrastructure in the amount of $94,830 with a 10% contingency to cover unforeseen costs for purchase and install of electric vehicle charging stations. Also approving the application to the DTE Business EV Charger Program and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. The city was approached to enter into a partnership with General Motors and its local franchisee, Le Stanley Chevrolet, as prescribed third-party installer and a prescribed third-party installer charge infrastructure for installation of electric vehicle charging stations. This item is specifically to award the contract to charge infrastructure for the sole-source purchase and installation of electrical vehicle charging stations. The value of the contract is $94,830 with a 10% contingency to cover unforeseen costs. In addition, the city of Dearborn applied to DTE Business EV Charging Installation Program for potential cost savings for installation of EV charging stations. This agreement provides a donation, is a donation of charging units with no maintenance fee for five years with a 50% split on installation costs. The charge infrastructure will install electric vehicle charging stations at four city-owned locations. One is Fordwoods Park, Fordfield Park, Parking Lot A in West Dearborn, and the Community and Performing Arts Center, Ford Community and Performing Arts Center on Michigan Avenue next to the police station. This project will happen in three phases. The first will be a site visits for overview and surveys. Second will be engineering, design, and construction and plan drawings. And then final phase will be construction and installation. An immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on this. It's very exciting that the city is moving forward and progressing with partnering with the Stanfords to provide chargers to not only our residents but guests of our community at the locations you mentioned. I know that electric vehicles are early in their infancy in the United States and that there's not a whole lot of them out there and the supply isn't making it any easier to get them right now. But I do think this positions us as a community to embrace this technology, embrace vehicles that will replace internal combustion engine vehicles. And whether EVs stick around for a long time, I think the fact that we have an opportunity to lead the way in this, in this technology, I think is fantastic.
Yeah, no, I agree totally, I appreciate that. And I think it is important to add too that most people understand that the domestic vehicles all have certain charger points. So these will be equipped with those if they do have a different brand such as a Tesla, there's adapters for it. So there is a way for everybody to reach them. I think the locations are going to be, are chosen, are fabulous. So hopefully, once we get the team in there, see what's the best in and out spot for it, it will help out. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. And I believe Councilman Abraham actually brought it up during the mayor's briefing this last week before the committee of the whole. I had a concern about two locations, which is both Fordfield and Fordwoods Park, because the parks close at 10 o'clock. They're supposed to be closing anyways. And I have heard too that we have a number of complaints at Fordfield and it has been proposed by some people to actually have gates along Brady and along Morley Avenue to go ahead and close that park so there isn't any access. But I think it was a very good idea that was brought up by Councilman Abraham about making sure that the administration makes sure that those electric vehicle stations have a shut-off, that they cannot be used on a 24/7 basis, in particular on those two park locations. So I appreciate this and let's see where it goes.
Do you have any response to that? My understanding is that people will park there and plug them in overnight. These chargers take between four to six hours to charge.
Yeah, the goal behind the chargers and where the locations are is that we were looking for places where people would spend time. So to the council president's point, in order to charge fully, I believe it's like four to six hours or a little bit around that estimated time. But essentially, the park made most sense. So when you're out with your children and your family, you can park your vehicle. I think to Councilman Abraham's point, this is one step in the right direction and we'll continue to look at different options and opportunities to ensure that we continue to look at how greenery and being more environmental friendly as a city. So I think, I hear you, councilman, and I hear your concerns and we'll take them into consideration.
Okay, council, you want to follow up?
Yeah, just a, just a follow-up to that. You know, it's pretty well-known, you want to go ahead strategically, place these electrical vehicle stations in places where people are going to frequent. And shouldn't be able to frequent a park that is closed by ordinance at 10 o'clock at night for four to six hours and simply walk then or take another vehicle to get home. Me as a resident and as a council member, I don't think that we should be paying for people to go ahead and charge overnight when the park should be closed and then maybe come back in violation to the ordinance again and coming back and picking up that vehicle four to six hours later, sometime two or three o'clock in the morning, just to pick up your vehicle. Take it home, charge it at home. It's a convenience to go ahead and get people to enjoy the amenities and that's why we have a couple of different parking lots. It draws people to a business district or to any attraction. That's the convenience. The convenience isn't allowing the electrification of a vehicle to be charged after 10 o'clock at night when those parks should be closed. It's an attractive nuisance anyways, those parks, and we got to keep people out of the parks.
Council President, if I may?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, to the councilman's point, I do, I hear you. And I think that, I think we're talking about two different extremes, right? One is, the one I'm referring to is what the purpose of these charging stations at the parks are, right? Is for individuals, I think we learned very, you know, we learned the hard lesson during COVID, right? That our parks were something that we need to invest in and essentially, that's the reason why these were identified as locations. I think the other piece of this is, you know, under the leadership of Chief Shaheen and I think, you know, we could spend all night to talk about how great he is, but under his leadership and with our amazing, you know, police department, we have the ability to ensure that these stations are secure and safe for our residents and that it is definitely considered amenity and not a problematic point for the city.
Councilman Humud?
Yeah, so I guess on the previous discussion, how you guys choose to regulate the opening and operating hours of the EV charging stations, just on a kind of a personal note, I would say if it's similar to the operation of the bathrooms that are next to it, that would probably be helpful. Because I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of feedback on where to place charging stations and actually, I do appreciate that Department of Public to place charging stations. And I, actually, I do appreciate that Department of Public Health kind of had a hand in this because there's a big movement now in EV infrastructure to figure out where exactly to place these types of things. And there's actually a lot of science and economic development aspects that go into figuring out where to place chargers. So I appreciate that it was, you know, a well-thought-out idea. And so I guess on the topic as a whole, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with one of my council members. Electric vehicles are not in their infancy. We have phenomenal electric vehicles that go three hundred miles and electric vehicles actually existed before internal combustion engines. But, you know, and I say that as an EV engineer. So, but, but regardless, I'm really happy to, to co-sponsor this with you.
Do you know any way that owned one five years ago in the U.S.?
I, I had a hybrid years ago, so.
Hybrid is not electric.
We're on our fourth generation currently. But anyway, anyway, and Council President Serini sells them all the time. But, but, but I guess my, what I'm really happy about is, you know, I, I am happy that the city itself is taking this on us as, like from the parks perspective. I look forward to seeing us work through ED to help incentivize business owners, because I know a lot of business owners have reached out to me in terms of, you know, what they can do with the city in terms of permitting and what, and how we can work with utilities to provide the energy necessary to get to their parking lots and things like that. Because we have a lot of cafes in the city of Dearborn. I think that's something that people don't necessarily realize. Dearborn is a city that has a lot more coffee shops per, per square mile, I think, than a lot of other cities. And I think it's because people have a sense of community and we have some walkable downtown areas. So, and I think those are places that people would like to spend. So continuing to work on that synergy, continuing to work with ED and continuing to work with Public Health, I think it's going to, it's all going to work together. And this is a, a general step in the right direction. I'm, I'm really happy that we're going with something like this, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Councilman Paris?
Just, just real quickly, I would, I would ask then too, I know a number of our parks and some of our facilities too have TV monitors that we possibly consider then too about putting these chargers if they are still going in the same location, that we look into the monitoring by TV cameras also that we might have in the city at some of the parks.
Thank you, sir. If you'd like to speak, thank you, if you'd like to speak, you need to come up to the front and, and address from the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you can make your comments.
Ryan Rassler, I, are they putting the charging stations, if they put them on the upper part of the parking lot, that would probably never close, correct? There's one side lot on the upper part?
Right, no, I live there, I understand.
No worries.
It just depends on if that's, that's still considered the park, so I'm sure it is, it is still closed. There is a little side park, a park. That whole area is a park. But right now, we're approving the, the installation of it and there's going to be a whole design team that goes out and finds out what's the best spot for it. Yeah, so it, it might not be that spot.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Abraham, yeah?
I just want, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this. I just, based on what was presented to us at the briefing and on Thursday, this doesn't change the operation times of the park. And our understanding is that it, the intent is to use the technology to shut the chargers off when the park closes. That's what was presented.
And we know, there isn't a built-in to do that, built into the charger. So there would be no additional infrastructure costs. All right, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments on this item?
Just one comment slash question.
Yeah, of course.
Something I forgot to mention. So I think, I think you already mentioned that this is being paid for and substantially subsidized by DTE and by grants, right?
Right, we have a fifty percent cost for the city.
Yeah, so that's one. And then two is, something we discussed in the, in the briefing that we may not have covered here also is, we, we also talked about, you know, how, how to make sure that this is also utilized in a forward-thinking manner as the technology updates. So we did look at, you know, if, and we're going to look forward during the project, and I think the administration said that they, they'd be okay with this, but I don't see the chief engineer or DPW here. But thinking about the future of how the technology evolves and how additional power is going to be routed to the parks. So that is all, there's a, there is a future-proofing aspect to it too, hopefully. And the actual chargers, kind of like what you were saying, Council President, there is an SAE standard. And I think only Tesla is the one that doesn't use the standard.
I didn't want to say their name, but.
Yeah, but, but I, but Tesla's technically domestic, so you said domestic. So, but all, all electric vehicles do use the same charger except Tesla.
Except Tesla, okay. That, that's true. You're right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or corrections? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. We just received the revised backup documentation for this item, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. It appeared, it appears that what was changed was under the brief description, the value of the contract is one hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. So it looks like what was done was the value of the contract plus the ten percent contingency was rolled into that new number of the value of the contract. Is that the only change in the documentation from what we had received on Thursday and what we now have in our hands?
Whose item is this from, Chief? Purchasing?
It's under Economic Development.
Mark Rosensky, purchasing manager. There have been no changes to the document since the cow.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where there's a question. I read it to the records, ninety-four thousand plus a ten percent contingency.
This is what we received today.
Yeah, they, they added it together. That's the ten percent.
And I just want to make sure that's the only change in the document.
Understood. Oh, yes, that, that is the correct amount, the ninety-four thousand plus the ten percent.
Okay, thank you.
So that's not, there's not a change.
Not a change, but it's a new memo.
Yeah, that's the only difference in the memo. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-four resolution in need of an offer supported by Hamud acknowledging a donation of fitness equipment valued at over five thousand dollars from Hype Athletics to the fire department.
Do we have?
Offer?
Offered by Councilwoman Herrick? Okay, and this request is to acknowledge and accept a donation of over five thousand dollars of fitness equipment from Hype Athletics. Hype Athletics generously donated its fitness equipments to the fire department. This donation includes cardio equipment on treadmill, tread climbers, elliptical stairmasters, as well as some weight equipment. This donation provides updates to gyms at each of the four fire stations as well as the training center and immediate effect is being requested. Again, we'd like to thank Hype Athletics for their generous donation. We do appreciate that. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-five resolution by council members Abraham and Enos acknowledging a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Jan Holmes in memory of her husband, Larry Holmes, and authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate the donation and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is a request to acknowledge and accept a donation of one thousand dollars from Ms. Jan Holmes in the memory of her late husband, Mr. Larry Holmes, and to authorize the finance director to recognize and appropriate the donation to the fire department budget. Mr. Larry Holmes was treated with compassion and compare by firefighters from Station Two, allowing him to stay in his home during his health struggles. The thousand dollars will be used towards the purchase of health and fitness equipment at Fire Station Two. This will supplement the equipment at the station currently and the fire department respectfully requests that the city acknowledges this, this donation from Jan Holmes in the memory of her late husband and is requesting immediate effect. And we have Mrs. Holmes here tonight too, would like to speak on this item. Take this up forward.
I love counsel. I just came to commend the fire station number two and the first responders. I, when you listen to President Biden's State of the Union, he mentioned in that about how our citizens of the country should be, hopefully be able to stay in their homes instead of having to leave their homes because of health reasons. And my husband was one that had many health concerns over the last five years. The Station Two lift and assist was what kept my husband being able to stay in his home. Those gentlemen that came into our home numerous times because he didn't have the strength or the mobility to get up, and they treated him with such respect and were so kind and considerate and with such empathy, I can't thank them enough. And they could lead a masterclass across the nation in how to treat the elderly and senior citizens in our city and across the nation. They would come in, help him up, ask him if he is okay, make sure he could walk and be on their way. That is what kept him be able to stay in his home. So I can't, I would, like I said, I, we had a celebrational life and we raised this money and that's where we would like to see it go, to those guys.
Ms. Holmes?
Thank you.
Yeah, we really appreciate it. I really thank you very much for coming forward. As I indicated early on when I spoke to you, until you have the situation interaction with your fire department, people don't really realize the value of our public safety and why the residents of the city of Dearborn are so passionate about providing this type of care. I understand, you know, I, I've had six children being called. I talked to you earlier before, the great fire department had picked up my father before he had passed, my sister when she did. And there is a compassion aspect. This is not only punching in and punching out. These people are doing a job that, that serves the community. And there's nothing more important than a person's dignity in their life and there's no measure for it. So I, I can really thank you very much for bringing that light forward. And Chief, Chief Murray has done a tremendous job. Like you to come forward, Chief. And we do appreciate not only the donation, but more importantly, bringing light on this because, you know, the residents have concerns sometimes and they say, you know, our taxes are a little bit higher, you know, our services are superior, but, you know, are they happy to stay in the city of Dearborn? Are they happy with the, what the services we provide? And until you have to pick up that phone and dial nine-one-one for either a police or a fire emergency or EMS, because our city is, is unique. Our firemen are cross-trained, as the chief will indicate. They're not just firefighters or just EMS. So I, I really do appreciate it. I'm glad, Chief, that you were here to, to hear this tonight. I, I know we always praise our fire department, but when you have a resident, take their time to sit in the audience. I offered Ms. Holmes if she'd like to come up early in the meeting and she said, no, I'll wait. She didn't want to interrupt. That's, that's the kind of person she is to pay her respects to her late husband and cherish this moment with the city to explain to them how important it was. So I'd like you to thank your men. I know, I'm sure you know who the men were.
Absolutely.
But I'm sure it's not just them too. It's a whole group. And, and I do appreciate those, your comments. So thank you so much. And we do appreciate the donation and it will be, will be used properly. So thank you very much.
Along with that, the, the training that those men receive and the people that hire those men, I mean, all across the board, when you know how to be empathetic is, it's a real plus and it's a, it's a passion of theirs. And again, they're hired to be firefighters, but yet their services go where other people don't see. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holmes. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Council President, if I may, while Chief is up here.
Yes, Chief.
Mrs. Holmes, first, let me just thank you for honoring your husband with an act of service, for giving back. And I, and I promise, I think, under the leadership of Chief Murray and the amazing firefighters that we have, that, that donation will go a long way. So on behalf of the mayor and the administration, thank you very much. And while we have Chief Murray up here, thank you for your leadership and your service because I think it all starts with the, the top, right?
Absolutely.
Leading by example. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Unanimous roll be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-six resolution in need of an offer. We have a support from Councilmember Enos.
Offered by Councilman Abraham?
Offered by Abraham.
Supported by Councilman Enos, yes.
Granting permission to the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council in conjunction with the Community Relations Department to conduct the ninety-seventh annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three from seven-thirty a.m. to approximately two p.m. on Michigan Avenue from Outer Drive left on Brady Street and to conclude in the south parking lot of Ford Field, subject to all applicable ordinances and rules and regulations of the police department. Also granting permission to close Michigan Avenue east of Outer Drive to west of Evergreen and Nollan Road, Nollan Street north of Michigan Avenue as well as Garrison Street with use of the city-owned parking lot on the south side of Ford Field Park. Also granting permission for all rights to public vending for the DAWVC and their respected vendors and granting permission for the Community Relations Department to place event-related and directional signage on city-owned property and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the city of Dearborn seeks to carry on its annual tradition of the presenting the Michigan's longest-running Memorial Day Parade for its ninety-seventh year in honor of our veterans and those who have lost their lives while serving our country. In partnership with the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council, the parade will feature over eighty regional officials, marching bands, community groups, including, concluding with a commemoration ceremony in honor of the fallen soldiers. In partnership with the Dearborn Allied War Veterans, the parade will also have commenced it, I'm sorry, commenced at the lawn of the Dearborn Historical Museum. This is a change from last year, Chief. I know I wasn't here on Thursday, so. And our grandstand will be located within the Les Stanford Chevrolet parking lot on Michigan Avenue. So we're moving it down Michigan Avenue this year. The revision of the parade route from twenty-three is due to the planning road construction in East Dearborn on Michigan Avenue where the parade took place in the past. At, at the recommendation of Dearborn Police Department, it is being recognized to, requested to utilize Michigan Avenue with closure of east on Outer Drive to west of Green, Evergreen, as well as South Brady Street between Morley and Michigan Avenue from seven-thirty a.m. to approximately two p.m. It is also requested that the Nollan Street north of Michigan Avenue as well as Garrison Street be closed for public traffic between seven-thirty a.m. and two p.m., two p.m. and curb-to-curb use of generated accommodation for the route and parade traffic. In addition, we request that the U.S., that the use of the city-owned parking lot in the south side of Ford Field Park on south of Brady Street for parade re, parade setup and parking as well as shuttle services for the parade. It is also requested the city council grants public vending rights to our selected vendors with appropriate permits and licenses as well as placement of necessary event-related directional signage on city-owned property as well. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, I know I wasn't here on Thursday, Chief, but this is a significant change and I understand the police have recommended this location because of the construction. Anything you'd like to add? Is this, as far as where it's going to be located or any changes besides this?
And, and nothing currently, Council President, but I think I would ask the, you know, look forward to the communication coming out during that, close to the, the time of Memorial Day. We'll have a lot of information and disseminated through CDTV, our social media, our Facebook. So a lot of the information about the changes and, you know, what to expect and all the, the good stuff will come through closer to.
Communication, yeah. Yeah, the only thing I would ask, Chief, hopefully as it gets closer, maybe we can provide a map where we can have, I'm sure it'll be on the website and we'll put it out. And, and I'm sure with the police department, we've had a few of these events in this area. We just have to have at least one exit out of the area for that timeframe and entrance out of that area. So I just wanted to make sure, I know we have some marching marathon in some areas there. It's a short window, but there's actually no exit out. And this particular air, time, it's seven a.m. to two p.m. So I'm sure the, the chief will have an area where you can get in and out. I just want to make sure there's a lot of residents in that area that want to make sure they can go to, get in and out for that timeframe.
We'll definitely provide a map. The, the police department and the Community Relations Department's been working really closely together to ensure that it's a seamless transition.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments on the parade? I know we'll all be walking in it. We got a new sign, thanks to Councilman Enos. We had to change the, add your name to it, so we got a new sign for the council. So we'll, hopefully, we'll see you all there at the parade. Any flyover, Chief? Did we get a flyover? Did we get a flyover? I wasn't at the meeting, so I wasn't sure. We got a flyover this time? Talk about it?
No, we didn't talk about it yet.
Okay, good, so I got a good question.
It's a surprise.
Surprise. I love your communication surprises, but I guess we'll wait and see what happens, huh? No, we've had, we've had some bombers, we've had some major aircraft flyover, so I guess we'll, we'll wait till the surprise is leaked. Maybe the chief will do a video on that, we'll find out. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hopefully, we'll see you guys all at the parade. This is a great event and I'm glad we're continuing as well. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-seven resolution by council members Paris and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Daniel A. Hensley Alfred to the Water System Advisory Council with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is a recommendation for approval and appointment of Daniel A. Hensley to serve on the Water System Advisory Council for a three-year term. The term will be ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Any immediate request, immediate effect is being requested. I just wanted to remind everyone, these are voluntary positions and are extremely important to our city, that we have people that volunteer and do this work. So we'd like to thank them ahead of time for that. Any questions or comments? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make mention, just so the audience understands the significance of this Water System Advisory Council. This started actually back in the nineteen nineties federally, but Michigan has had this for a period of time too. It falls under the lead-in compromise rule and as many people know. And as many people know about the situations that we've experienced in Flint and Benton Harbor and other locations in the state, that since 2018, the Michigan revised the leaden copper rule to require 50,000 population cities and over to form a water advisory council, and they must meet a minimum one time a year. You must have a minimum of five people. And in this case, we have more. We have another person after this one to possibly be appointed upon our approval. But basically, it talks about water quality issues. And there are six important points why these advisory councils were mandated. Most importantly is to educate and inform residents in the community groups and advise and consult with the city in efforts to replace lead service lines in particular. But we have several, including two people that we're considering tonight to bring on this board with immense qualifications. I mean, we're talking about people that are involved in Great Lakes Water Authority, South Huron Valley Unity Authority, and also South Gate is in there too, for another candidate. So, or wind-up Water Authority. So I really understand the significance and I hope that this advisory council gets off the ground rather quickly. Attended the first two a couple of years ago for this authority. So I'd like, obviously, for this to get up and going. And I appreciate the administration coming forward with this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. And then just a reminder, with permission of Councilman Paris and Hamud on this, that we are amending these resolutions to indicate that the language should indicate as well in the resolve clause that a failure of a multi-member body appointee to possess the required qualifications for the appointment by this charter or law shall result in that a member's immediate vacancy from the multi-member body to which they were appointed. Mr. Clerk, we had put that in the last aspect, and I want to make sure it's in every one of these resolutions. So I'm just going to refer to the clause barring no objection from Councilman Paris. No objection, Councilman Hamud?
No.
Okay. So it's hereby added to there. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Unanimous rule be attached. Next item, please.
Item number 28, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Paris, concurring in the appointment of Samuel Smalley to the Water System Advisory Council with a term ending June 30, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is another recommendation and approval and appointment of Samuel Smalley to serve on the Water System Advisory Council for a period of three years. The term will end on June 30, 2026. An immediate request is also being offered, is also being requested immediate effect. I apologize. And then, Mr. Clerk, as well, with Councilman Enos and Paris, no objection. We will add the clause for the council in the resolution, the resolve clause.
Okay.
No objections? Okay.
No objections.
All right. Hearing and seeing none. Unanimous rule be attached. Next item, please.
Item, under new business, item 29, resolution in need of offer and support, appointing Lila A. Dakrueb to the Board of Review with a term ending January 1, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and I will offer this. And we would need a support. Mrs. Dakrueb, support by Councilwoman Hamud. Councilwoman Hamud. And Mr. Dakrueb, would you like to step forward? I know you've been waiting since a long time, so thank you for coming. Just to give a background, I appreciate, Mr. Dakrueb, you coming forward. This Board of Review is a three-year term. And it has, we had some questions from our legal department, whether the requirements on it has to do with, in the past, we had licensed appraisals. And it's found that it is only required that you have some necessary skill and land values, which, as a Realtor, successful Realtor and president-elect of our Board of Realtors, we did receive your resume. I did distribute it. Broker?
Associate broker.
Associate broker, okay. So you're not a Realtor?
Well, it's the same thing. I sell real estate, but I just.
You still sell real estate. I understand. But my, no, she has commercial background.
I do.
All right, well, let's let her answer. Let's let her answer. So we can get through. So, the bottom line is, Mr. Dakrueb, I think I wanted to make sure when we did have this situation arise, I appreciate you stepping forward. I sent it all to all the councilmembers. I was, again, out of town, so I was hoping. And I did indicate for anybody to call yourself if they had any questions or comments. This is an important position, Mr. Dakrueb, because this is the chance where the resident can say, hey, I believe there was a mistake on my assessment, on my tax assessment. And there's a small window, so people understand, for the law, there's a small window for them to appeal to the city. And once they do that, if they, once they have made that appeal, they reserve their right to go forward on to the tax tribunal if they have some more complaints. So, we do have an appointee from the council and from this body. So, Mr. Dakrueb, we'd like to just have some comments from yourself at this time.
So I have been licensed since 2007 and I've been practicing real estate as a salesperson from 2015 and for the past four years as an associate broker with Remax Team 2000. I have a business that is commercial and real estate. About 35% to 40% of my business comes from commercial and the rest is residential. I do sell a lot in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights. This is where I've lived since about 1999. And please feel free to ask me any questions. I work on a daily basis with clients and most of the defining factor of whether we're going to move forward with the house or not or what are the taxes. And that's a really big one, especially in Dearborn.
Would you say, Mr. Dakrueb, that you have experience necessary to evaluate a property's value?
I do. I have a basic knowledge of state equalized value and the millage and where that comes from to correctly assess it.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Hamud?
And the only reason why I was a stickler on brokers is because a large portion of properties and a big portion of the reassessments we're going to be getting are going to be commercial. So that's why I think it is important to show that Mr. Dakrueb has the requisite knowledge to assess commercial properties as well as residential properties. So I just wanted to point that out.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, Mr. Dakrueb, thank you very much for your service. Just for the record, this is a three-year term. The term will end January 1 of 2026 and immediate effect is being requested as well. Hearing and seeing none. No objections. Unanimous rule be attached. Congratulations, Mr. Dakrueb. Thank you very much. Make sure that you see our council executive. There is a swearing-in time period that you have very limited time to meet with our clerk. So after the meeting, you can see with our executive, Jackie. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you for serving. All right, any other, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Nothing further from the district office. Thank you.
Okay, anything further from my colleagues? I have nothing from myself. Anything from my colleagues? Councilman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. In the invocation earlier this evening, the pastor made mention, but I'd like to express deep sympathy for the victims of the February 6 earthquake in Syria and Turkey. We know that this has affected Dearborn residents because many have relatives, especially in Syria. And I want to express appreciation to the organizations that have been taking up collections and working to provide relief to the victims of that devastating earthquake. Also, I'd like to, it's just been a really hard time for us the last couple of weeks here in Michigan. The MSU, the shooting at Michigan State University last week really hit home. Here in Michigan, just barely a year ago, we had the shootings at Oxford High School. And as we've all heard on the news, some of the students who were affected at Oxford and lost loved ones at Oxford are now up at MSU. And they're going through the second school shooting in such a short period of time in their young lives. And this is not something the high school students should have to go through when they're in a learning phase of their life. They're young. They're just starting to set off on their own. And they're having to confront this and deal with this. And fortunately, a lot of them got to go home this past week and spend time with their families because they need that kind of support after a devastating traumatic experience. And I want to acknowledge that and express my sympathy to the students who are impacted and their families. And more importantly, urge our elected officials on the state level and the federal level to do all they can to pass common sense gun legislation, gun laws, more extensive background checks, ensuring that firearms are kept locked safely, you know, using current technology. You know, we have ways of protecting family members, you know, who have guns in the house that we didn't have, you know, 100 years ago. And it is up to the adults who are in the legislatures and it is up to us as parents and family members to support the young people. We saw 1,000 students at MSU sitting on Monday in remembrance of those who lost and asking that adults help them to make a change. Here in Dearborn, we're fortunate that we do have the Police Department that's been acknowledged numerous times this evening, that works with our school district and works with city building, within our city buildings, and works with business owners to ensure that we have as safe practices, safety mechanisms as we can put into place in the buildings that we have here. And unfortunately, you know, our Dearborn Public Schools do go through safety drills. They were scheduled to have one the day after the school shooting at MSU and they postponed that, that they were going to be going through a practice drill. And so we're doing what we can to protect the young people and the citizens that come into our buildings. But we need to, I am imploring that our legislators do more and listen to the young people who are asking for the adults to help them to make sure that this does not continue to happen in our state and in our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. Just to follow up on that, I think, since you had mentioned the schools and my kids are still in the school age, one left in high school. Many of our, just to put it easy, many of our councilmembers here today were on the council when we did pass and allowed the schools to cooperate with our Police Department to have a live video feed. There was controversy on that as well. I had no problem, as well as my colleagues, voting for that. I don't see any reason why our officers should not be able to see what they're going into when there's a situation. So rest assured, the students of the city of Dearborn, there is live feed that can be turned on and our police can see what's going on if there's an incident that happens, and hopefully there never is. So that is some of the things that the council has worked with, with our school, to make sure that our children go to school and be able to come back home. So I do appreciate the comments and I wanted to make sure that our residents knew that our schools are equipped that way and it was passed by this council, I believe, last term. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilman Paris.
Just wanted to add what you just said, Council President. I did spend a number of years in public safety at the University of Michigan Dearborn. And I know for a fact that both Henry Ford College and the University of Michigan Dearborn have gone through a number of large-scale emergency exercises that were involving the police and fire. I was also working at the time when we had the shooting at the Henry Ford College and was out on the property at that time when that occurred. And I understand the emotions and the feelings of folks and we just need to continue to go ahead and perform these exercises and make sure that we can go ahead and ensure that our citizens and our schools and our colleges are kept safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paris. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, any questions from the administration? Chief?
Just to thank Councilwoman Herrick for her comments and that, you know, as administration, as a city, obviously, we definitely just doubling down on the sentiments and our sympathy. On the point of legislation, just want to welcome our Congresswoman Rashida Talib, who's in the audience. And what better way to kind of ring in and to Dearborn when we talk about gun violence and how we can have a larger, broader conversation about that? So just wanted to ensure I welcomed our Congresswoman to our meeting.
Thank you very much, Chief. Mr. Clerk, anything from the Clerk's Department?
No, nothing further from the Clerk. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we have concluded our session. We will open a public comment. I know the Congresswoman was here as well. Congresswoman Talib? This is a public comment section. Okay. Does anyone here from the public like to speak? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
I am Diane Purdy. My two daughters came up and talked earlier. And I want to thank both of them. And it's nice to have two daughters love you that much.
That's right.
To support you. And my, I don't want to be redundant and repeat anything they said. So what I did is I went through what our new insurance plan is doing for me. I take 22 pills a day. According to a 90-day refill that I would have to pay for, and that would be nine different drugs, it would cost me $630. My nine drugs in 2022 were $5. It cost me $45 for that same three-month supply. Is that fair to me when I am not working? I'm on Social Security. I am on a pension. I can't afford to pay for this. I'm diabetic. I wear diabetic shoes. I am now paying $40 Friday to pick them up. I never paid anything. I pay $10 every time I go visit a doctor. I have many, many illnesses. I mean, it's either I eat or I buy prescriptions. So I was given $500. And the mayor, according to what I hear, it's 250 deductible for the two years. Already, I've spent $345.50, including my diabetic shoes and one doctor appointment. So I don't have much left to pay for. It's pretty sad. My husband and I together don't make enough money. We're under the amount to get help from Social Security or extra help, is what they call it. I don't know what to say to the mayor. I have already sent him two emails to Hala or Halal. No answer, no phone call. I think that's pretty bad. I was very good friends with Mayor Guido, Mayor O'Reilly, and they thought of their seniors. Why was I not grandfathered when I retired? I should have been. I had been given a package for, I retired in 2004. In 19 years, for 19 years, I've had the same insurance, except Humana kicked in, but that still protected me. It's not fair. And why isn't somebody helping us seniors? I'm not the only one. I belong to the DMRA. We went to that meeting and everybody doesn't even know what they're talking about. They don't know what to say. Nobody, and it's not just me. It's the whole city that's gotten affected. And it wasn't even negotiated. It was put on the table and it said, take it or leave it. So it was signed. And I know that for a fact. So I go to the meetings and, you know, like I said, the DMRA. I'm trying, I've called everybody to try and get less medication. And I'm supposed to take what they call DAW medication, which is the exact medication. Well, if you take generic, I can't take that because I don't know if that will protect me. So, and it's $120 for 90 days to take the better medicine. Otherwise, it's 30 and it might not work. I just want to give my opinion.
No, I understand. No, we appreciate you coming and staying forward for your, you know, your concerns. And we do appreciate it. Just some things to clarify so that we're on the same page. As far as generic versus non-genere, my son is a pharmacist. A lot of people have experience in that. A lot of the drugs are the exact same formulation.
I've heard that.
Okay, I know, but I just wanted to make sure that you know that.
But, and I'm going to try to take one.
Okay.
And I'll see how it works.
I know, I understand. But I also want to make sure we put this in context.
Yeah.
The council is charged with making this decision. It was brought forward through the administration. The administration has delegated the budget to bring us a budget and then we approve it or we can change it at that point. I just want to make sure everybody puts us in context. The voters of the city of Dearborn voted down a millage, a renewable millage that will last for 10 years. a renewable millage that will last for 10 years. I've said this many times, I'm not sure if you've seen the meetings, but I was the only council member that voted against putting it on the village, on the ballot. It went on the ballot and it failed. So 13 and a half million dollars was lost in city budget. So just so you, the residents understand, we cannot spend more than we take in. So when the administration took over, they had a hole of 13 and a half million dollars. So they went through and they brought us proposals on what was the best way. Also, this council, with some of my colleagues here, created a task force. Do you know Pamela Hamilton Stokes?
Paula Stokes.
Paula, Paula, I apologize. She was, she was on the task force. Eric Cullum was on the task force. So-
I know both of them.
I understand, but you were saying it was done without any input. That's not the truth.
They were there and there were three other people there. I don't know who they were.
We created a task force to go over it. Now, that doesn't mean-
But they, it wasn't negotiated. They didn't really have a chance to say anything.
Well, that's a matter of-
As what I was told.
Right, I know.
I wasn't there.
I understand.
I was told that.
I understand.
And I understand too, there's a rainy day fund. There is some money to fall back on. And, I mean, it is, the city isn't falling apart, you know?
No, no, I, we understand.
There's got to be another way to do it. It's got to be renegotiated. People cannot live like this. And I can't, I can't manage.
We do have, Chief, we do have patient advocacy's. So, does she have that ability?
I called. I called and they cannot help me. I have called everywhere that can be called.
Okay, well, after, I mean, if she could get you the information because I know you're saying you've called.
I have that patient advocate. I have the number.
Okay. But you, I want to make sure that you get the help that you need. So if, if you're indicating what you read as far as what your medication costs and what they are today, that's a substantial difference.
Well, I, this is exactly what it is.
So we want to make sure, we want to make sure that you have reached every aspect of what you can have and what you cannot have because the city council did appropriate that money in your account so that you would have it. So that, to lessen this burden on you. So we just want to make sure that it's working as, as provided and make sure that you get what you're, what you're prescribed by your doctor. So if the doctor prescribes you only this certain medication, you know, you, then that's, we understand that. So we got to make sure that you're getting the right information so that you can make that decision.
Okay, well, you have something?
Yeah, I'm going to have the Chief of Staff after just to make sure you got the right information because what, for me personally, as my mom retired as well and, and I, believe me, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I can tell you that I don't think there's anybody on the council that wants someone to have a substantial difference where they financially are burdened this bad. So when you're talking from $45 to $630, that's substantial.
It is.
So now, if there is a way for you to take different medication that the doctor approves and reduces your burden, that's what, I want to make sure that you've checked on yourself.
Well, I'll give you the list of what I'm taking and-
That's what we're going to do. We're, I'm going to have-
I went, I called Humana today and I got all the figures from Humana today.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it because a lot of times people have come and said they weren't happy. They had to pay $10. I mean, I want you to understand too, this body took this serious. This is not where we just take it lightly. But we can no longer afford for people to have zero deductible, zero copay and zero office visit. If, if I sat up here and told you that that's what we're going to do, I would be lying to you. And I'm not going to do that. Ford Motor Company, General Motors, nobody has that. What we had was unsustainable. For someone to go and pay zero for a doctor copay, zero for medication, zero for a visit, it was impossible to keep that going forward. So, believe me, but also I can speak for myself and I believe for my, my colleagues as well, that a jump from $45 to $600 is unsustainable and I don't believe that's, that is-
Believe it or not.
I believe you.
The cheapest prescription is $30 that I can get for 90 days. That is the cheapest.
And I understand fully, my, my mother's retired. I have a supplement on top of her supplement and I, I get bills all the time. And I'm fortunate enough that I'm able to pay for it so she can get the medication she wants. I understand that. And not everybody is. But I'm just telling you from myself as the council president, when I hear from $45 to $630, that's concerning and alarming at least.
And I've got it right here.
I believe you. What I want to do is I want to make sure that there's not other ways because people have to change their medication. I like brand medication as well too. Because sometimes when my son showed me on the bottle as a pharmacist that it's the same ingredients and it's half the cost. Unfortunately, that's the world we're in today.
The 120 went down and it went down to 30.
Right. Which is a substantial difference.
But that's the lowest it will ever be. It used to be $5. Sometimes three-something.
Correct. I understand.
So, I mean, that's ridiculous. And what I paid last year for 58 prescriptions was $277.43. Now, this has, there's no deductible here. The copay is high on Humana, which I have. And if you reach $7,400, then your copay will be smaller. Well, who's going to reach $7,000? I mean, I just won't be able to keep buying prescriptions. That's almost what I get from the pension.
Yeah. Ma'am, I understand. We're going to talk after with the Chief to see if there's any way we can do, but I just want for the record to understand too, that our general employees also took a significant change in their, as their, in their health structure as well. This was across the board from the mayor on to everybody that is employed by the city as well. So this was not something we took lightly.
I know that. I, and I feel sorry for them.
I know. I just want to make sure it's not singled out that it was only on the retirees. Every employee of the city of Dearborn changed their health plan to significantly different, high deductible plan. And it was choices that the city had to make based on the voters saying they were refusing to pay more taxes. The voters voted this down.
Maybe they couldn't afford to, you know?
Right, I know. I agree.
I can't afford to. And I don't want to be the old woman that was carrying pizza and fell and broke her leg or something. It was on TV and it was just a commercial. But she had to go back to work.
I understand.
And she was about 80 and, you know. Well, anyway, that was just part of the joke here.
I appreciate it. It's a good joke. Just hang on a few minutes. We'll get to the after, okay? Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you.
She said it was a joke. Councilwoman Paris?
I just want to make a brief comment here. Thank you for coming up and sharing that information and your daughters earlier. The only comment I wanted to make on this is you're not unique. I mean, I have heard from a number or have read from a number of retirees that have a lot of the same sentiments as what you do. And for the record, I will explain too, that I am a city retiree. Okay, I'm fortunate enough at this particular point that I'm able to afford it reasonably at this time. But I would ask the city really to track complaints. I know it's out of the city's hands now after January 1st. The benefit design went into place. But we are really having some difficulties for some of our retirees. I even read and have contact with another retiree just today that still hasn't gotten a PNA card six weeks after they were supposed to get it. You know, this is the middle of February and still don't have it. Now, that may not be on the city, but we as a city need to get on our providers to make sure they're doing what the city bargained for and what we're paying for to at least get that. You know, this, this has been happening for quite a, quite a few retirees have not, including myself, have not had the expectations delivered that I thought we would get after January 1st. We've had some difficulty. But we have a representative with us. And the reason why I want to bring this up in front of our representative is we have to do something with prescription drugs. We have to do something with our medical costs that we have in this country, not just here, but across the country. And I implore our legislature, our leaders in this country to do something about prescription drugs and do something about our healthcare. Because individuals like this young lady here are having difficulty. A lot of people are suffering as a result and we need to do something about it. So thank you for at least sharing your information with us. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Paris?
What was the PNA card?
Ma'am.
What did you call the PNA card? Is that the debit card?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Paris, thank you for your comments. And I do appreciate those sentiments. I know our, our Congresswoman is here and I know the President had brought it up in his State of the Union that, as I mentioned, my son is a pharmacist. The, the amount of money that we pay for prescription drugs are the largest by far. I don't know how many times more than anywhere else in the world. And it's not the pharmacies making the money. I can tell you that. Because they charge them back. Yep, the management.
I can't remember, but my independent pharmacists are losing so much. They're closing doors because of it. I just want to thank her because it takes courage to come forward and talk about the impact of our broken healthcare system in our country. You know, I'm going to work with, with her and her family because we have federally accredited clinics throughout our nation that cut the middle person. They get direct drugs. They're almost like a mini hospital and they have their own pharmacist that they don't have to deal with and they get to negotiate these drugs and to work directly with some of these pharmaceutical companies who honestly, they go make a profit off of our retirees, our seniors. The more sick you get, the more money they make. It's unfortunate. And so, we got to work around trying to go through, again, some of my 501(c)(3)'s and nonprofit organizations. And my federally accredited clinics have been lifesavers for people even that can't afford their asthma inhalers anymore, that suffer from, you know, diabetes for their insulin and everything. So we'll work with you directly on that. And again, a lot of our, you know, folks talk about the Americans living check by check. It's very real. We also have communities and cities living check by check in many ways as well. And I know that there is a lot of tough decisions that you all have to make. I came because you're going to expect, you might not be surprised. I, I do come to city council meetings when I'm in town. I don't always expect to speak or anything, but it sounds like you all need me sometimes to come up maybe to speak. But I want folks that are listening, especially our residents, don't come to me just about legislation. Come to me about helping you through everyday challenges and issues because honestly, you give credibility and I can share those stories with my colleagues so they can move with urgency. I can share the story of a young girl in my district that's impacted by MSU shooting. That, she may not have been shot, but the mental health and the PTSD, I mean, she is, we're dealing with the trauma right now of the fact that she has to go to this place that she thought was safe. No matter how many drills we have, Councilmember Paris, or how much we are going to do, and I, I talked to, the Chief texted him, we do have folks that can come, no questions asked, Chief, right, to come and get a lock box from your local, all the stations have them, to, to lock your, 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 your guns. And I'll tell you, we hear about the mass shooting, but I'll tell you, I've heard over and over again of children getting their hands on and shooting loved ones themselves and getting hurt. So also know, your Dearborn Police Department has those lock boxes and no questions asked. Go in there. It's free and you can get one. They also have the, I know, I'm, I'm taking classes to learn more, but the little piece that locks it, right, what is it called?
Gun locks.
Gun locks. There's actual, actual gun locks. And so, more and more of us, I'm a part of the gun reform task force, we actually are taking classes to learn how the manufacturers put guns together, what are certain things called. So we can be, you know, understand, like, what is a weapon of war? Assault weapons versus different other guns? What are, what are done for hunting versus other things? And again, this is important because we do have an addiction to guns in our country in a way that is not even just about our rights anymore. It is used to justify a lot of other kinds of actions. And so, again, we can understand, you know, the questions of why? Why is this happening? How many? 67. The, it's not only just schools anymore. It's churches, it's faith, or locations, it's movie theaters, it's grocery stores. And so, my residents are living in so much fear and again, trauma of seeing people talk about their grandmother grocery shopping and losing her life in that aisle. And again, all because of an assault weapon that can take folks within minutes. Take, I mean, literally, just within minutes. And again, many of my veterans always tell me, you know, these are weapons of war that we have to be taught and trained to use, but you can go ahead in a department store and go buy one here in Michigan. And that's really scary to me that someone, again, that might not understand what it means to be a responsible gun owner. And plus me, I have many members of my family who I love dearly who do have a phenomenal job being a responsible gun owner. We all know them. They're incredible. And they get it and they understand and they will do the extra, what is needed to making sure that our community and our country is safe and that people can live again without that fear of, of, again, being victim of gun violence in our country. Everyday challenges and issues that our residents have, know this. The power of my letter had the power to pick up the phone and call that federally accredited clinic, calling sometimes even our hospitals that have bills for our residents. We just had one recently in Dearborn, in Garden City. I can call Beaumont. Let me call Henry Ford, who tell me all the time they have financial assistance programs for low-income residents. Well, I'm going to see if they actually do. Because implementation does matter to me. And so, even when they do get somebody on health insurance, they don't go retroactive. Do you know, most of our, our residents are suffering right now and the major, main issue of bankruptcy in our country, and you know, you run credits-
Medical.
Is medical bills.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, the broken healthcare system is real. It's not just mass surgery or somebody suffering cancer. It's prescription drugs. It's literally going, one time, make the emergency. You got to go. It's, it's your life. You got to go to the emergency room. You get that. And, and what happens, that deductible, which you know is there, but you're like, oh my God, I just got, this happened to even, $750. I mean, just like that, on my residents who do not have that kind of savings or that kind of income to be able to cover it. So, use our office for those everyday challenges and issues. And because it gives me the bill ideas, because now we have a bill now barring medical debt to even show up on people's credit report. I don't want it to be the same as a house or a car. It's medical debt. It's medical debt. It should not come up and be used against you for housing or employment or any of those things. Again, medically necessary debt. Yeah. And so, we're going to work really hard with the Biden administration. It's one of the top priorities. We just got to understand, we have to continue to speak up. Because I'm there. They don't come to my office, ma'am. But they come to everybody else's office. You know who they are? The, the healthcare lobbyists, the pharmaceutical lobbyists. There's hundreds of them. Hundreds. I wish we had hundreds for, you know, getting Medicare for all, to be honest. We only have a handful of those folks pushing. But again, the answer to me is to be able to continue to hear our residents speak up because they give credibility of the fact that it is broken. And when more people like her speak up, they say, oh wow, it's happening to her. She worked. She retired.
Right.
She paid into a system that's supposed to promise to take care of her. And so, when people hear those stories, it really does, all of a sudden I'll get calls like, Rashida, this is, you got to do, help me with this. And, and again, when I'm in that committee hearing, I can share that story without even using names. But it's real life things that, again, can help my colleagues understand. We have to move with urgency. My door is always open. We're going to have mobile clinics within Dearborn, especially around the number of cases that we're getting. We're actually monitoring what's coming through our office. A lot of veteran services, passport services like crazy. But all of that to say is that our office, again, call us 313-463-6220. 313-463-6220. A lot of you will call your council members. They'll call me. I know Leslie has done that and Mustafa, our Councilman Hamud and Councilwoman Herrick. You all are more than welcome to do that. I do not ask people for their political affiliation. I do not ask people any of that stuff. If you live in my district, you will be taken care of. You will get a call back. You will be asked questions. I ask for your partnership. I ask you to tell me everything and, and get me, you know, going because I can really get going. But I'm the eldest of 14, been taking care of people all my life. This is what inspires me to actually serve, is the constituent cases. I love calling DTE for you because they're shocked that the member of Congress calls DTE. I will call. I will call.
You have called for them.
I will, yeah. I will call the VA for you if you haven't heard back from them because you need that appointment. So again, I'm here to help any way I can. I'm here to serve. Please know, my team and I are really, really intentional about the constituent service programs. One of the things that I'm actually training other colleagues around the country, members of Congress right now, been asked to do a, a training on the neighborhood service center model that I, I run out of our office. But again, this is where we get our bill ideas. This is where I hear from teachers, everyone, about what can be done for us to be safe and be us to have opportunity to thrive. And again, thank you. I, I can't express to you the courage that you did coming up here. Because I know it's, it's like hard to say that you're struggling, but it really, it's going to make me go and email a bunch of people. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your work. Anyone else here would like to speak to the council regarding city business? Please step forward for the public comment portion. Okay?
Since nobody else, I was just getting started.
No question.
Okay. I just wanted a point of clarification.
Ma'am, you got to, you got to sit, you got to address the council statement.
Sure. Rashida Talib, I was just before you about the car wash nuisance issue. I would like to have a clarification on Corporation Council statement that the car wash is permitted to operate 24 hours a day. Is that correct? I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly.
We, that council referred, based on your information regarding the showing of 2013. Shall we put that out for the ministry, for the administration and the director to come back and find out whether that actually happened and it wasn't in the minutes and wasn't, like you said, anything else. So we have to make sure it's, it's, so right now we got to know the definitive answer. So we won't know until we get that information.
So the, so the Corporation Council does not know the hours for this car wash?
I, my understanding, so my understanding is the hour restriction was linked to a variance with the bay. So the hour restriction is on the bay. Now, I have not seen the ZBA minutes related to the hour restriction. I know that there is one, but I don't know if it was just linked to the bay. So the question-
Which bay?
The car wash bay.
You mean the eight bays?
I under-
That's why I didn't want to get into this.
I know, but I want to be clear on this because the question I was asked was not whether the variance what, had the hour restriction. The question was whether the code permitted the operation of the car wash. Was there, is there an hour restriction? The question was whether the code permitted the operation of the car wash. Was there, is there an hour restriction in the code? My answer was no.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight that the nuisance ordinance that we have technically, because you just did conduct in January 2023 a decibel reading test, and they're clearly in violation. So technically, there's a statutory nuisance happening here, right? And it's of public nature because it's not just two private entities who are having an issue with each other.
No, I disagree with you, and I disagree with the throwing of the term nuisance.
Okay.
So like Director Tordy indicated, we've ticketed and we've now proceeded to go to court. Just because there's a violation of a code does not give me the right to classify it as a nuisance and shut it down. That's where you and I are disagreeing. And what I would tell you is similar to what the council president indicated. Since we became aware of this issue, what you've seen is a reoccupancy process, a ticketing process, and now the new owner taken to court over the violations. So what my department has been tasked with doing in conjunction with ED is making the case that this operation either needs to have conditions in place for its reoccupancy or shut down. That's a process. I can't just, based off one ticket with the use of an alley or after-hours operation, shut the business down. And you and I know that we've sent officers out there past the normal work hours for this particular reading. Yes, there have been readings that they've been in violation. There were other readings where they were not. There were no noise violations under the code. So that's the process we're in. That process unfortunately takes time, and so does the court. But we're committed to resolving the issue. And what I would indicate is we've promptly addressed it the best way we can under our code and existing laws. I'm not comfortable saying because there's a noise complaint that that business is deemed a nuisance and I can shut it down.
Even though in the statute, it clearly outlines what does indicate through its definition as a public nuisance. I mean, in addition to the decibel readings, it's about the comfort, safety, and repose in causing harm to be... It may not be an imminent danger in terms of, I may not be having like chemical fumes coming into my home, right? But at the same time, there are clear definitions here of what constitutes a violation and prohibition.
Ms. Rita, we talked about this. This is not, as the city attorney indicated, that's an element which has to go through court.
Okay.
So I recommend, like I said earlier, that if you should go to the court when they go and voice your opinion. This is not a court, and we're not shutting no business down tonight.
Okay.
I want to make sure it's clear to you.
Because I have heard you say it before, and I clearly understood it.
Absolutely.
I'm trying to get information that is very relevant.
This meeting is for the council, and you're not here to speak to the city attorney. You speak to us.
He addressed the answer, so I have a right to ask him.
I asked him, and he allowed him to speak to you and answer your question. But it's not going to end because you want to say that it's a nuisance.
I'm not trying, you, please don't project what you think I'm going to say or what my intention is. I can let you know what that is. I'm just trying to get clarification from him.
This is the second time you came up. So you are done speaking tonight?
Yeah, I just have one more question.
There's nothing else we will have from you tonight?
Why is that?
Because I'm the chair of the council, and this is the same item that you addressed earlier, and it's not going to get resolved tonight.
But it wasn't fully addressed.
Well, I apologize. You have to wait for it to come back in from the council. You've raided thirty years, so I don't think it's going to matter if you wait another few months, okay? We have to go through the court.
I've waited thirty years, but it doesn't matter if I wait three months?
No, what I'm saying is now we're in a court process. I already went over this. I'm not going to go over this again.
That's a really, really aggrieved comment for you to make.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You should really be careful about what you say to your residents.
Ma'am.
That was very rude.
You have to stop talking at this point because we are done with this issue.
That was very rude, council president. That was very rude and unprofessional on your part.
I apologize that you feel that way.
Okay, and I apologize. You always really need to cut people off.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Ma'am, please return to your seat. Any other questions or comments from anybody from the council regarding city business? Okay, hearing is seen. Now, do I entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Councilman Herrick. Adhere.